Hi. How are you?
Good.
Good, good. Good to see you.
Good seeing you.
Do we need more than one?
One's good. I'm gonna see our feeling.
Well, thank you.
You just let me know.
Okay.
Did you forget about that?
Always. Terry, could you turn those on, please?
Right, right, that's what we have. You're gonna read this and then you want me at that point, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
There's nothing to change. I see you got your treat there.
I did. She goes, if you're good, I'll give you a treat. For a couple minutes or two. I just hurt my shoulder.
You're not coming home. Don't even try.
Okay. Before we get started, I'd like to remind everyone that we have a code of conduct policy. When there's copies of it in the back on the table, if you aren't familiar. We are asking board members and the residents and the members in attendance to be respectful of each other. No interruptions. And I prefer not to have to stop the meeting because of any interruptions. But if I have to, I will issue a warning. And if it continues, I'll have to ask you to leave. So. I'm gonna call the meeting to order and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Greg Carnes.
Here.
Jennifer Eaton.
Here.
Sarah Dolman Jersey.
Here.
Herman Ferguson.
Here.
Dean Haas. Is absent. Chris Repetta.
Here.
Van Mopler.
Here.
All right. Purpose of this public hearing is to consider the revocation of the site plan approved May 16th of 2023 for Michael and Rebecca Malark concerning compliance with conditions of approval of the special land use permit and approved site plan.
Hey Greg, before we move in, is there a public comment time?
Yes.
During the public hearing?
After the attorneys.
Okay.
There will be a public comment.
Okay, normally I've seen that highlighted. I just wanted to make sure it was gonna be there.
There will be. There will be a public comment. We're gonna have Chuck start with the township and then, where's Roger?
In the mail.
Here.
Oh, there you are. And then we'll have Roger and then if they care to rebuttal, we'll have that and then we'll have public comment. So Chuck?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I want to ask Chuck if anybody, if we should be making sure that all of us sitting on the board should be in with these discussions and making this decision.
If there's any board member that has any financial interest in the outcome of this, they should recuse themselves.
Okay. Does any board member have a financial interest in the outcome of this? All right, then. We will move into the township's position, please.
Becky and Michael Malark own real estate in Tyrone Township.
Make sure you speak into your mic.
See if I can pull it a little bit closer there.
Yeah, there you go.
And the property is located in the FR zoning district. On, in a document that has been date stamped February 6, 2023, the Malarks made application to the township for a special land use. And that is the first document that you see up on the screen up there. This is a document that is required by our ordinance if somebody is seeking to operate what they call an agribusiness in the FR zoning district. Our ordinance requires that a special land use permit be applied for and before they can operate the agribusiness, the special land use permit has to be granted. And as part of the process, a special land use, I'm sorry, a site plan must be presented to the township and must be approved. So this first document that we have includes what they call a use statement. The second page of this document is dated February 2, 2023, and it is a document that was presented by Michael Malark as part of his special land use application. This document is supposed to express all of the uses that the Malarks would be seeking to do on their property. I've highlighted portions of it and I'm not sure that the highlighting shows up on the screen. But the second paragraph of this document reads, Bear Naked Wood LLC is a custom woodworking business where I supply and sell not only raw live edge wood material, but also custom finished products such as countertops, fireplace, mantel shelves, chainsaws, or chainsaw carvings, benches, lamps, boards, and home decor. Currently, my customers come over by appointment to select materials, place orders, and pick up finished product. Understand that before this application was made, the Mark sought and obtained a home occupation permit that allowed them to do this. But the home occupation permit has limited life and limited scope. I presume that's the reason they wanted to have the special land use permit approved so they can expand both the timeframe and what they could do there. On the second page of this document, in the second full paragraph, Mr. Malark wrote, "My goal with the special land use permit is to turn approximately 40% of our new barn into a showroom so that I can display products in a climate controlled and safe environment for our products." The second full paragraph reads at the beginning, "Our showroom hours will be Tuesday through Saturday, 10:00 PM, or 10:00 AM through 6:00 PM, and Sunday, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and our actual operating hours for business and assembling will be Monday through Friday, 8 until 5." Going down a couple paragraphs, "We would like to have a small permanent sign near our driveway." And then it goes on to read, "In the future, we would possibly like to entertain several possible options for growth as well." The first bullet point they have is that they'd like to have small special classes in parentheses, 15 maximum people available on a monthly basis for things like building a birdhouse, building a board, pictures with Santa, and so on. The second bullet point reads, "In addition to the special events classes, we want to offer a photography room slash space for local photographers, giving them a place to rent." Turning the page, paragraph number three said, "We would like to be able to hold a specialty sales event twice per year." It goes on to explain what the special events would be, or special sales events would be, would be tied to their agribusiness. The next page, as we see, is an overview of the property. It shows where the property is. They do have some markings on there indicating where barns are, trailers and parking, things like that, and an existing drive. And then the next page is a email which talks about their new barn build. I'm gonna skip now the next page and go to the site plan. This is the document that was prepared by the Malarks pursuant to ordinance that details where the activities will occur on the property. And you can see at the top of the page, it's called Parking Detail. And then towards the middle and the bottom, it talks about employee parking, customer parking, and additional parking down to the bottom. And of course, it shows the barn with the showroom. As we move on in the presentation here, this will become somewhat important for the things that the site plan does not show. The next page is more detail with respect to the use of the property. And again, we will see what is missing from these site plans as we move through the presentation. But as we all know, this is about such things as harvest host, parking of RVs and recreational vehicles overnight, a dog park, portageons, generators, possibly weddings. And again, none of those items do show up on that site plan. The next page, another portion of the site plan. And the next page after that, also. We have some survey drawings with some details with respect to the road and driveways. Nothing really significant in that. As they went through the process, the Malarks learned and believed that they had to amend their use statement. So the next document is on March, is dated March 19, 2023. That reads substantially the same as the original use statement, however, on page two. The first full paragraph, it reads, "The majority of my equipment and tools are in our smaller pole barn where I have made my workshop. The workshop section of the barn is fully insulated, thus keeping noise level to a minimum, and not for my residents, but also for my neighbors that live nearby." The significance of that is they realize that noise is one of the things that the planning commission and the township board would have to consider. As you go to the next page. We get down to the numbered paragraphs. Again, we have special events, building a birdhouse, and so on. Item number two, photography room. And nothing else on that is significant. The next portion is our ordinances. Article four of our zoning ordinance addresses the FR or Farming Residential District and the RE or Real Estate, or Rural Real Estate Residential District. Section 4.00 offers the intent, I'll read portions of it, "The intent of the FR Farming Residential District is to protect lands best suited to agricultural uses from the encroachment of non-compatible uses while designating an area appropriate to this type of single-family residential development that does not alter the general agricultural character of the district." Section 4.01 lists the principal uses. Principal uses are uses that are as of right in a zoning district and do not need any special applications or permits from the township. So permitted uses include agricultural, dwelling, home occupation, essential services, tables, storage, and care facilities. Section 4.02 talks about accessory use, buildings, and structures, not an issue here tonight. Section 4.03 talks about special land uses. And it reads, "Due to the unique characteristics of special land uses. Site plan review and issuance of a special land use permit according to Articles 22 and 23 are required for analyst's agribusiness." I'm gonna read a portion of this. "Agribusiness as defined in Section 2.01. The accessory retail sale of agricultural products and similarly related uses when such commercial tourist-based activity is conducted in conjunction with an additional agricultural-related use permitted by this article, and when such retail use is clearly incidental to the principal use of the property. Not less than 50% of the product offered for sale during the growing season will be raised or produced, or shall be raised or produced on the same premises by the proprietor." The next paragraph reads, "Besides retail sales and roadside stands, other commercial and tourism-based uses may include, at the discretion of the township, food services utilizing product, except livestock, grown on-site, retail sales of specialty products incorporated items." As we turn the page, it talks about special events and it points to Section 22.05 of the ordinance and 22, I'm sorry, 22.05 R and 22.05 K. Section 22 point, or Section 22 deals with off-street parking. And Section 22.05 allows roadside stands to sell agricultural products. As we go down the list, it talks about other uses that can be by special land use permit. One of those includes sub-paragraph J, which is campgrounds. And as we turn the page, it concludes what other uses may be by special land use permit. The next page that we have provides some definitions. This is in Section 2 of our ordinance. It defines what an agribusiness is. "A retail or tourism-based business operation conducted in the FR Farming Residential and RE Rural Estate Districts clearly incidental to the principal permitted agricultural use on the property in which no less than 50% of the agricultural products or services sold or offered have been raised or grown on-site." Turning the page, we get to Article 22, which is special land uses. Again, this is the requirement to operate an agribusiness in the FR zoning district. Section 22.01 reads in part, "The Township Planning Commission, after reviewing consideration of the special land use application and site plan according to the standards contained in this ordinance, shall recommend to the Township Board approval, disapproval, or approval with conditions of the proposed special land use. The Township Board grants either approval, denial, or approval with conditions to the special land use application. Only the Township Board may direct the zoning administrator to issue a special land use permit." Section 22.02 provides the procedure or process that the township has to go through and of course, the applicants. Sub-paragraph A indicates that the homeowner or the property owner must file the special land use permit application form, submit required data, exhibits, and information. Flipping the page, data requirement. You have to have the statement of use. Sub-paragraph B2 provides, "The special land use permit application shall contain a full statement of the requested use. The number of the ordinance article allowing provisions for the special land use requested, the reasons why the applicant feels that the land use requested should be granted, substantiated by data, exhibits, information, and evidence regarding the requested findings that set forth in Section 22.05." The main thing that you take out of that is that the use statement is supposed to be a full statement of all of the uses that's intended on the property. Sub-paragraph B4 indicates that the site plan must be prepared that complies with Article 23.
Greg, sorry to interrupt. Did we do a formal adjournment of the regular meeting or we're just, we just entered the public hearing?
We just go right into the public hearing.
Okay. Typically, I thought the process was to adjourn the normal township board meeting in favor of the...
Where are you at, Chuck?
I'm turning to the page, to page 22-dash, 22-dash five.
Yep.
At the bottom. It talks about site design conditions. Sub-paragraph B, if you're having a campground there, you have certain things they have to provide. As we move down to page 22-dash 27. Sub-paragraph R. It's captioned, "Agribusinesses uses in addition to the sale of agricultural products raised on the farm." And it provides in part, as defined in Article 2, and remember, that's the definition of agribusiness, and provided in Article 4, "Agribusinesses are provided as a special land use for parcels in the Farming Residential and Rural Estate Zoning Districts and may include agriculturally related uses that are clearly incidental to the principal permitted agricultural use on the property. In some cases, the agribusiness may involve a commercial or tourism use that is more[1396.82][1396.86]intense than a roadside stand or a facility for the sale of items grown or raised on the farm. Parenthesis, standards for these facilities are found in Section 22-05K." Close parenthesis. Agribusiness uses such as those, these are governed by the standards below, and it has a number of standards. We turn the page to dash 22-dash 28. It has a provision for private events. And again, this is under the agribusiness provision, meaning that it has to be related to the agribusiness. 6A provides in part, "Special events, an applicant who desires to host special events shall indicate such in their application. They shall indicate the types of events, the frequency, and the numbers per year, the number of persons expected, the hours, and other information as required below by the planning commission for the understanding of the request." Move on to page 22-dash 75. Section 22-dash 08 is captioned, "Exploration of special land use permit." The last sentence of that paragraph reads, "The breach of any condition, comma, safeguard, or requirement shall automatically invalidate the permit granted." Moving on, Article 23. This is the site plan review and impact assessment. This is required by Article 22, which addresses special land use permits. We move down to Section 23-dash 01. Again, it indicates that you have to have the site plan review and impact assessment for special land uses according to Article 22. We move to section or page 23-dash 4.
Hey Chuck.
Yes?
Did some checking and it seems we do have to adjourn the meeting. Or not adjourn, but...
Just start the public.
Start the public hearing.
We have to close the meeting and...
Close the meeting.
Start the public.
Okay.
Yeah. So. I need a motion to... Close the meeting and start the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Sorry for the mishap. Yep. Gotta start from the beginning.
You want me to start from the beginning? Be glad to do so.
It is the public hearing and in order for it to be correct...
All right. Go to the top of the page. The Malarks own property in Tyrone Township in the FR zoning district.
Hey, hey, hey. Zip it.
The Malarks, the Malarks were interested in seeking a special land use permit to operate an agribusiness. The first page that we see in the packet is dated February 6, 2023. That's time stamped by Tyrone Township. This is the Malarks' application for a special land use permit. The next page is dated February 2, 2023, and it is Michael Malark's use statement as required by the ordinance for applications for special land use permit. The second full paragraph on that first page reads, "Bear Naked Wood LLC is a custom woodworking business where I supply and sell not only raw live edge wood material, but also custom finished products such as countertops, fireplace, mantel shelves, chainsaw carvings, benches, lamps, boards, and home decor." The next page, the first full paragraph reads, "My goal with the special land use permit is to turn approximately 40% of our new barn into a showroom so that I can display products in a climate controlled and safe environment for the product." The next paragraph reads in part, "Our showroom hours will be Tuesday through Saturday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and Sunday, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and our actual operating hours for building and assembly will be Monday through Friday, 8 until 5." Moving down, Mr. Malark writes, "We would like to have a small permanent sign near our driveway." Moving on farther down, "In the future, we would possibly like to entertain several possible options for growth as well." Number one, you'd like to have special event classes, maximum 15 people on a monthly basis for things like building a birdhouse, building a board, pictures with Santa, and so on. Number two reads, "They want to offer a photography room slash space for a local photographers, giving them a place to rent." Turning the page. Item number three, "They'd like to be able to hold specialty sales events twice per year," and it goes on to explain more detail about the twice-per-year sales events. The next page is a aerial view of the property. I'm gonna guess that came from Livingston County GIS. It does indicate where the barn is on a Malark property, existing driveway, and where trailers and parking would occur. Next page is just an email. Next page after that is another email. After that, we do have the site plans that was prepared and submitted by Mr. Malark. After that, we do have the site plans that was prepared and submitted by Mr. Malark with his application. The first page is captioned at the top, uh, plan, our parking detail. And you see that it has provisions for employee parking, customer parking and additional Absent from this page is any indication where parking for RVs, campers and the like would be on the property. The next page is more site plan items, providing more detail. Probably most telling of this page is what's absent from it and that includes such things as where recreational vehicles and campers would be, a dog park, generators for RVs or campers, porta johns and holding of wedding ceremonies. Next page is more detail about the barn. Garage area and the like. Next page, second floor of the barn. Next page is driveway and depicting the roadway in front. The next page is dated March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. That is a revised use plan or use statement by Mr. Malark. Apparently during the process, he believed that he had to provide more detail and alternate things than the original one. It is substantially the same as the original, however, on page two. The first full paragraph, the second sentence reads, our workshop section of the barn is fully insulated, thus keeping noise levels to a minimum for not only my residents, but also the neighbors that live nearby. I think that's it acknowledged by Mr. Malark that, uh, noise is one of the factors that the township would consider and whether it should issue the special land use permit. Turning the page, the paragraph that is, uh, enumerated one, talks about special events, maximum fifteen people. Again, we see the birdhouse building and so on and so forth. Item number two indicates, uh, we want to offer a photography room slash spa, uh, space for local photographers. And the remaining portions of that use statement are significantly the same as the original. Moving on to the ordinances. The Malarks were seeking a special land use permit. Article four of the township zoning ordinance addresses the FR farming residential district and the RE rural estate residential district. Section four point zero zero reads, and this is the intent of the section of the ordinance, the intent of the FR farming residential district is to protect the lands best suited for agricultural uses from the encroachment of incompatible uses while designating an area appropriate to the type of single family residential development that does not alter the general agricultural character of the district. Section four point zero one addresses principal uses that are allowed in the zoning district. Understand that if you have a principal use, you seek, do not have to seek permission from the township to use your property for that nature. However, if it isn't a principal use permitted, you cannot use the property as such unless the township also offers a, a, um, special land use permit type of situation. So principal uses permitted include agricultural and it defines agriculture as farming, truck guarding, fruit orchard, greenhouses, nurseries and the customary farm buildings except commercial feeding operations and sandlots. Obviously, you can have dwellings, home occupations. The Malarks did have a home occupation at one point in time. Uh, they wanted to expand. Uh, home occupation permits are limited in duration and in scope and because they wanted to grow, they had to go to the special land use process. The next page, page four dash zero two talks about special land uses. In the FR zoning district, you can get a special land use permit upon application and approval by the township for an agribusiness as defined in section two point zero one. So four point zero three, subparagraph A reads in part, the accessory retail sale of agricultural products and similarly related uses when such commercial or tourist based activity is conducted in conjunction with an additional agricultural related use permitted in this article. It goes on to provide that not less than fifty percent of the products offered for sale during the growing season shall be raised or produced on that property. Goes on to say, besides retail sales and roadside stands, other commercial and tourism based uses may be include, or may include at the discretion of the township, food services used, utilizing product except livestock grown on site, retail sales especially products incorporating such items. Top of the next page, which is four dash three, talks about special events additionally and it points to section twenty-two dash zero five R and section twenty-two dash zero five K. Twenty-two dash zero five R talks about off street parking and K talks about roadside stands to sell agricultural products. As we go down the list of items that you can receive a special land use permit, uh, permit for, we see item J, campgrounds. And that's all we need to see in that article of the ordinance. We move on to page two point, uh, dash three of the ordinance, which is the, in section two, which is, provides definitions that the ordinance, uh, has to follow. Agribusiness is defined as a retail or tourism based business operation conducted in the FR farming residential and RE rural estate district, districts clearly incidental to the principal permitted agricultural use on the property in which no less than fifty percent of the agricultural products or services sold or offered have been raised or grown on the site. Next is Article twenty-two, which addresses the process for the special land uses. Section twenty-two zero one provides the authority to grant or deny permits. The township planning commission, after reviewing consideration of the special land use application site plan according to the standards contained in this ordinance, shall recommend to the township board approval, disapproval or approval with conditions of this proposed special land use. The township board grants either approval, denial or approval with conditions to the special land use application. Only the township board may direct the zoning administrator to issue the special land use permit. Section twenty-two dash zero two is the permit procedures. The application is under subparagraph A. The Malarks had to fill out an application. They had to re, uh, submit required data exhibits and information. Subparagraph B on page twenty-two dash, uh, dash two provides for data requirements. The data that has to be provided to the township includes not only the application, but a use statement. Subparagraph B two, B two provides, the special land use permit application shall contain a full statement of the requested use. That means that every proposed use on the property should be detailed in the use statement. They also have to provide a site plan, which is set forth in section, or paragraph B four on that same page. As we move to the next page, uh, the items that you have to submit this data for includes the campgrounds, if you're making application for the campground. On page twenty-two dash twenty-seven, which is subparagraph R, you have to, uh, provide the data for agribusiness uses in addition to the sale of agricultural products raised on the farm. It provides in part, as defined in Article two and provided in Article four, agribusinesses are provided as a special land use for parcels in the farming residential and rural estate zoning districts and may include agriculturally related uses that are clearly incidental to the principal permitted agricultural use on the property. In some cases, the agribusiness may involve a commercial or tourism use that is more intense than a roadside stand or facility for the sale of items grown or raised on the farm. Says agribusiness uses such as these are governed by the standards below. Move on to page twenty-two dash twenty-eight. Those standards include standards for private events. Again, this is under the agribusiness provision, so it has to be agri, uh, agriculturally based. Subparagraph six A, special events, an applicant who desires to host special events shall indicate as such in their application. They shall indicate the types of events, the frequency and numbers per year, the number of persons expected, the hours and other information as required below or by the planning commission for understanding of the request. Section twenty-two dash zero eight, which is found on page twenty-two dash seventy-five, talks about the expiration of a special land use permit. The last sentence of that paragraph reads, the breach of any condition, safeguard or requirement shall automatically invalidate the permit granted. Moving on to the next page, we have Article twenty-three, which is site plan review and impact assessment. Again, this was required, uh, by the article providing for special land use permits. Section twenty-two dash zero one, as indicated, you have to go through the site plan process for a site, uh, special land use permit as provided in Article twenty-two. As we move on, uh, page twenty-three dash three, uh, section twenty-three dash zero two details the site plan information that is to be provided. Subparagraph G on twenty-three dash four includes location of proposed landscaping, the location of all proposed landscaping, green belts, separation berm, fences and walls shall be shown. Uh, down at the bottom, subparagraph O, project detail and specific use, the details of the specific uses of the project under consideration must be shown on the site plan. As we move on, section twenty-three dash zero three found, starting on page twenty-three dash zero five, provides for standards for review and things that the township board and planning commission must look at, uh, in deciding whether to issue the special land Moving on to page twenty-three dash one five, section twenty-three dash zero six provides copies of the site plan and impact assessment. Says that they provide the number of, um, the plans and of course, we know the plans have to put all the specific detail of the uses on the property. Section twenty-three dash zero seven, site plan approval or disapproval. Subparagraph A, planning commission review, upon recommendation of the planning commission, the township board shall have the authority to approve, disapprove or approve subject to compliance with certain modifications and conditions, the site plan and impact statement. Subparagraph B talks about township board approval. They may approve, disapprove or approve subject to compliance with certain modifications. Page twenty-three dash nineteen. Section twenty-three dash one two provides for the approval, expiration and or revocation of the site plan. The last sentence of the second paragraph in that section provides, after conclusion of such review, the township board may revoke its approval of the development if it feels that a violation in fact exists and has not been remedied prior to such hearing. That's talking about, um, revocation of the site plan that has been previously approved. Section twenty-three point one three, amendments and approved site plan, an applicant always has the ability to come back to the township to seek amendments to increase or decrease the types and numbers of uses on their property. Okay, we move on to the next section. The next section is a number of documents, which shows the types of uses that are currently or have been occurring on the Malark's property. The first page, um, is some sort of blog or social media document, talks about Michigan weddings and it says at the top, second line, B N W studio, photography venue. Talks about Say I Do, which is speaking of weddings, has an indoor option available for photography. And it says, uh, towards the bottom, uh, call or text Becky and it provides phone number and the very end talks, it has the label Bear Naked Wood LLC. The next page is a Facebook post dated April of this year. It's, uh, shows that there is a photography studio or venue located at, uh, the Malark's The next page, again, speaks of Bear Naked Woods studio, photography studio. This is from another Facebook page, April twenty-twenty-five. The next page, again, uh, photography studio. And again, it talks about Bear Naked Woods. A portion towards the bottom says, uh, B N W studio is officially open and we're giving ten photographers a free thirty minute session to check it out. The next page is a Facebook page dated June second, two thousand twenty-five. And it's from a person named Dana. It says, if anyone is planning a wedding and looking for a venue in Fenton, I have the best kept secret. Then it goes on to say, any dog lovers or trainer friends that might be looking for a dog park to do classes or just to visit the parcel. The next page goes on to talk again, more about the dog park. And we get to, uh, the sign, this is a sign that is, uh, on the driveway near the road, uh, the entrance to, uh, the Malark's property. As you can see on the sign, it says, welcome to Bear Naked Wood and then it has, uh, items that are back there, including a showroom, dog park, harvest host and photography. The next page again is more photography advertising for Bear Naked Wood LLC. The page after that, um, is something from Sniff Spot, whatever that may be. And it has Bear Naked Wood Dog Park on it and this is a picture of an area on the Malark property, uh, for a dog park and it says, it's hosted by Becky M. The next page talks further about the dog park. It has pricing, says ten dollars per dog per hour, fifty percent off all dogs after the first dog, twenty-five percent off hourly price for thirty minute visit. At the bottom again, it says Bear Naked Wood Dog Park. The next page moves on to Harvest Host guests. Harvest Hosts is a national organization. It's an organization that includes persons that have recreational vehicles such as motorhomes and campers. From what I understand, um, you can be a Harvest Host guest, which means that a Harvest Host member can park their RV for overnight stays on your property. There is a recommendation by Harvest Host that if you do park at somebody's property, you buy a certain amount of product from them because it's an advertising technique for their business that they're operating. There's no requirement that they purchase product. And this picture of course, indicates, uh, or shows, um, Becky Malark and another person, awesome overnight stay at Bear Naked Woods. Next is another picture of, um, Becky Malark and their guests from Harvest Hosts. The next page indicates, um, an RV podcast, which was available on the internet. I don't know if it still is on YouTube or not, but it talked about, um, Bear Naked Woods, what they do there and of course, their Harvest Host membership. The next page indicates that Bear Naked Wood is a proud Harvest Host destination. Last year, we welcomed eighty-five RVs to our thirty-four acre farm in Fenton. They met campers from around the globe. At the bottom is a picture, picture shows a motorhome, possibly two motorhomes on the Malark property. The next page is posted on hipcamp.com, talks about, um, the- The next page is posted on hipcamp.com, talks about the Malark property, an onsite store with firewood for sale, a clean indoor bathroom available for guests, cozy fire pit areas, dog park, RVs welcome, no hookups yet. The next space, again, is for Harvest Host, talks about parking spaces, it has a picture of an RV, and then a picture at dusk, it's hard to make out what's in that picture. The next page talks about what's available, what you can do as a Harvest Host member. It says pets allowed, generators allowed, and so on and so forth. Next is more detail on Harvest Host. Following page talks about generators being allowed. The next pa- page says, "The onsite store is a haven for those looking to bring a slice of the journey back home with them, offering handmade candle scents that capture the essence of woodland serenity, custom signs that tell your story, and a selection of bar and countertops that would redefine your space." Arriving after dusk, no worries. Again, it details what's available there, including birding and wildlife viewing, gardening shop, gift shop, hiking, picnic patio area. Next page is a map of the general area. The next talks about a free event you don't want to miss, hosted by Mike Malark, and it's something about a Super Saturday. The next page is more pictures of the property, you see RVs in this picture. One is you have a camper on a truck, and then you have another camper being pulled by, it looks like a pickup truck. Next page is, again, more RVs at the Malark property. It looks like there may be three or four in the top picture. The bottom picture has one that's clearly visible. The next page is another picture of the dog park, it's fenced in, it has chairs. Next page, again, is for photographers in the photo studio. And the next couple pages are talking about photography, availability, indoor, outdoor, whatever the case may be. Moving on, we have some more colored pictures of the photography area. Says, "Local photographers are putting the finished touches on your new photography studio space, and while your input, what setups, backdrops, or features would you make this the perfect spot for your shoots?" Next page, again, they're offering free thirty-minute sessions. Another discussion on Facebook with respect to the Photography Studio. The next page is a, go to the next page. There we go, details, again, it's talking about Bear Naked Wood Photography, and there's another one, Chelsea Clark at, or, and Chelsea Clark at Center Road in Fenton. Talks about what's going to happen there with that photo shoot. Next page talks about Harvest Host and Rustic Woodland Decor Animal Friends. Next page is more colored pictures of the property. Next page is another Facebook post dated April of this year, shows the facilities on the Malark property. Next page, more photography venue. Next page, more photography venue. Next, that page, more photography venue. Next is more photography advertisement and shoots. Next page, at the top, it has Becky Malark, it's dated May second, I presume this year. Talks about free pictures available tomorrow, up to four people in our studio. So it, again, is talking about the Photography Studio. Next page is more pictures of the Photography Studio. Next page, Photography Studio with a particular photographer. And the next page is more photography. The next page, again, is advertisement for photographers to come to Bear Naked Woods property, talks about, "You're going to love this," and it has a couple pictures. The next is another post, and that post reveals that Mr. Malark has a second sawmill up north where apparently he processes wood and has it shipped to their Fenton product, our property for processing. And I think we have some videos.
Yeah. Shh. Works out for the best, doesn't it?
It sure does, no worries at all. It's a beautiful day, so my husband, like Paul said, we're Harvest Host destinations. We're going to talk to you guys a little bit about what Harvest Host is. And there's Bear, that's my dog Bear, so you can say hi to him. Harvest Host Bear's like, "Hi, everyone." Harvest Host is a really cool community. If you're not involved in it, and I highly suggest you get involved in it, for the simple reason is you can come to places just like this and camp here overnight. We actually just had an airstream late here this morning, a little travel trailer airstream, and they're heading to Hocking Hills in Ohio. So places like this are different and unique. We're not a normal campground. Obviously, you can see, we're a woodworking company. My husband and I own, like Paul said, it's called Bear Naked Wood, and they're located in Fenton, Michigan. But directly behind me, and sorry, I was trying to get away from the noise of the tractor, but this is just real life, so my husband is working, but I'm going to flip the camera around so you guys don't have to look at my face anymore. But this is where we're actually right now, this is going to be our whole entire Harvest Host area. So we killed a bunch of grass over there, and we're going to put some paper bricks down and build a structure where that picnic table is right behind that, with probably a fire pit, because obviously we're Bear Naked Wood, so we burn wood. As you can see over there, there's a bunch of firewood being cut right now. So right now, he's, we have a dog park, behind the tractor is a fence over there for a dog park. The tractor was not on at all there, but it's just a little loud with the video going on. But majority of our Harvest Host park right in this area. Some of them back in, some of them pull through. It just depends, you know, I've got forty-foot big tag axel diesel pushers rolling through here with tow cars behind it, and they can literally just go up and over, and if I have nobody else, and they're not going to be disconnecting a car, they can just pull forward. I do know that we are getting a lot busier here, so I have a feeling that we're going to be expanding this out further past our structures over here. But again, like Paul said, these are different places that you can go and camp at, and you can check out, so. And I'll give you guys just a little quick tour. That is our workshop, and this other barn here is half of the showroom, and then the other half over there is going to be part of the workshop as well. So people will come here, well, we are just a full-blown business as well, but other people, like the Harvest Host people, come here and they shop, and they could buy carvings, maybe that's evil because it's really heavy to be taking in a, in an RV, but we've had a lot of people buy carvings. We do a lot of different bear carvings, that's where we do a lot of carvings, really, and most of the are bear. Now, I have to flip around really quick, because if you are a fan of Paul's, then you have to be a fan of my friend Matt from Matt's RV Reviews. And if you don't know Matt, you better follow him, because he has the best toilet chemical available, and he just came out with a great tank cleaner as well. So we carry his stumps in our store because he's awesome. So Matt's RV Reviews, so big shout out to my buddy Matt, he's one of my best friends, and buying the toilet chemicals, huge, huge, huge fan. Okay, so I'll flip around and give you guys a quick tour of what we got going on here. And the barn is in the works of being finished, so I'll just give you kind of a quick overview of what it looks like right now. My husband and I have only been here about two and a half years, since we even existed when we moved in. So we, we like to have like a little guest book, I've got, you know, some camping mugs, some just kind of cute stuff. Harvest Host itself, we do, they require you to, well, they don't require, but it's suggested that you spend twenty dollars, or no, sorry, it's actually up to thirty now, thirty dollars of where you go. Look how cute and carried, bug spray. If you don't know about this bug spray, it's amazing, it's called Bug Squatch. He is my friend up from Gaylord, Michigan. We also have, we have syrup, and we have honey, I always keep in my pumpkin from us. So just different, unique things, and again, every single Harvest Host is going to be different. My husband and I started our business with white birch, so we have a lot of white birch items here as well, from, you know, birdhouses to bird feeders. We do a lot more bigger things now, so we do a lot of mantles, floating shelves, kitchen tables, and things like that. We have also a health and wellness business, so if you're ever interested in something like that. That was me, Paul, by the way, I don't know. But that was me, so over a hundred pounds, and all naturally, and my husband is now a vet. And yeah, this is kind of what we do here, and, you know, I won't worry with all this, just, just stuff, right? Stuff you can buy in a Harvest Host, you just never know. Everyone is very different and unique. I think the best thing that we do sell is our shirts, though, I'm just saying. It says, "Get Bear Naked Wood."
That is awesome.
The next thing that we see in the packet is the reprocess that the Township underwent. The first document is from the Livingston County Road Commission, nothing significant in there. The second page, we have a report from our planner, the Carlisle-Wartman Group. It goes through the application and details what the Malarks were seeking to do, and pointed out certain zoning provisions and the like. After that, we move on to the Planning Commission stage. The first document is a March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three meeting minutes from the Planning Commission. On the first page, towards the bottom, it says, "Residents Steve Hasbrock and Jeanette Ropetta spoke in favor of the proposed special land use permit for working agribusiness." The next document is the meeting minutes from the April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission meeting. On page two, they addressed the Malark agricultural, I'm sorry, agribusiness special land use. It says, "The applicant has been before the Planning Commission a couple of times and has made requested changes to their site plan and use statement." We already were aware of that, we saw the different use statements from February and from March of that year. It goes on to say, "The Planning Commission continued the discussion of special land use and prepared a list of conditions to be fully, or to be fulfilled by the applicant." Those conditions were, one of the conditions, "Applicants shall provide an annual report of the percentage of trees harvested for the property." As the Board recalls, there is a requirement that at least fifty percent of the products sold must be harvested from that property. Another one of the conditions are, at the bottom on the next page, "If the applicant wishes to host special events, it would be considered a minor amendment to the site plan. Pending approval of this amendment, the Board should discuss the necessity of insurance." The next document is, and so the Board knows, the Planning Commission did vote to recommend approval with those conditions. The next page is a May ninth, two thousand twenty-three letter from the Planning Commission to the Township Board. It indicates that at the meeting of April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, they had a review of Malark's application in a public hearing. It was moved that the Malark Agribusiness application be approved with conditions. It goes on to list all of those conditions. The last condition on the next page is, "If the applicant wishes to host special events, they may be considered as a minor amendment to the use statement and site plan pending Planning Commission review and approval." Pending approval of this amendment, the Board should discuss the potential requirement for liability or event insurance. The next document are the meeting minutes of the Township Board from May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. On the second page is new business, number one, the Malark Agribusiness Special Land Use Permit Request. It goes on to indicate, at the last sentence of that first paragraph, "The agribusiness includes processing trees into wood products to be displayed and sold from the property." The Township Board approved subject conditions, the request for the special land use permit to operate the agribusiness, and it gives the address. That is all, that is important with respect to the meeting minutes. The next document is a May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three letter from the Tyrone Township to the Malarks. It explains to the Malarks that at a regular meeting of the Tyrone Township Board held May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, the following action was taken. Trustee Schultz moved to approve the request by Mike and Becky Malark for a special land use permit to operate an agribusiness at nine-one-four-nine Center Road as recommended by the Planning Commission, subject to conditions. The next page is a letter dated January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. We're now moving into the Township finding that there are activities occurring at the Malark property that were not approved as part of the special land use permit or site plan. This is a letter that was sent to the Malarks. It says, "It has been brought to our attention that you may be hosting events at your business. Your special land use permit requires you to request a minor amendment to your site plan prior to hosting any events." Next paragraph says, "You will need to submit an updated site plan." It goes on to say that you are required to provide an annual report, that's with respect to the harvesting of trees, the percentage that would be harvested from the property had to exceed fifty percent, and it says, "We have not received such a report for the The next page is Mike and Becky Malark's response to that letter, and it says, "Regarding our gathering on January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, this letter is to address the letter we received from the Township about our land use permit. As we will be adhering to all the land use rules, this gathering does not apply. This gathering is a private by invitation only get-together for colleagues, friends, and family involving our online-based health and wellness business, which operates under a multi-level marketing model. The gathering will include a two-hour PowerPoint presentation from ten to twelve, with around twenty-five to forty attendees expected." twenty-five to forty attendees expected." The next page is a February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five letter from my office to the Malarks. Again, it informs the Malarks that they are conducting activities and using the property contrary to the special land use permit. It mentions specifically the dog park and RV park. Says that the special land use permit is for an agribusiness. That the special land use permit was conditioned upon you seeking minor amendments to the site plan and providing an updated use plan if you were to host any events at the property. Goes on to say, "If you seek to host events in the future, you must make application for the necessary amendments to your approved site plan and provide an updated use plan." The next document is an April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five letter from the attorney that the Malarks hired. It refutes the enforcement letters that were sent to the Malarks by both the township and myself. It says at the bottom of the first page, "It should be noted that Bear Naked Wood does not take issue with your position that a minor amendment is needed to host a special event." The next page has a section addressing RV park. Says, "The allegation that Bear Naked Wood is operating an RV park is false. Bear Naked Wood is a member of Harvest Host, which allows RV members to stay overnight for twenty-four hours or less at various places around the country. This simply allows self-contained RVs to stay overnight on the property. There is no power or sewage offered, nor is there any charge for overnight stay. This simply provides RV owners with a safe place to stay overnight instead of local parking lot." There's no mention in this letter about the generators that may be used by the, um, RV owners to generate power while they're staying there. And it indicates nothing with respect to the handling of, uh, septic, uh, fluids. It says in the next section, "Dog park. Similarly, uh, Bear Naked Wood is not operating a dog park business." Goes on to talk about the photography studio, um, indicates that they are, in fact, operating such a studio. I responded to the letter, um, in my own letter dated June twelfth, twenty twenty-five. I again talk about the, uh, zoning ordinance. Um, the second full paragraph says, "Your client's Planning Commission review application for a special land use permit states, 'We are looking to grow our business by making an official store in our barn. We are also looking to have three to five employees on staff throughout the week. See all notes on the use letter.'" Bear Naked Wood LLC attached a use letter dated February second, uh, to their application to Planning Commission, acknowledging that last year you had approved me for a home occupation permit. As my business is growing, uh, so too are my needs for more options for my business. The home occupation permit was exclusively for woodworking, with the applicant describing the woodworking business. The first one and a half pages of that letter explains how Bear Naked Woods LLC would expand its woodworking agribusiness. The letter continues near the bottom of page two stating, "In the future, we would possibly like to entertain several possible options for growth as well. We would like to be able to have small special event classes. In addition, the special event class that we would, or photography room slash space for local photographers, to hold special sales events twice a year." So on and so forth. I wrote on page two, "It is clear from your client's application that the proposed agribusiness is harvesting trees and woodworking the timber into products to be sold." Goes on to describe the process that the township went through and the approval for the special land use permit. There was no compliance with our demands to cease the operations that were in violation of special land use permit or the site plan. The next thing that occurred was that the Malarks filed a lawsuit against Tyrone Township. Their lawsuit, multi-page is long. It alleges, seeks declaratory judgment, uh, from a court with respect to their compliance with special, or with a, uh, special land use permit. Uh, declaratory judgment, violation of the Zoning Enabling Act, violation of due process. It says, "The township unilaterally invalidated plaintiff's special land use permit despite an absence of any procedure specified in the township's zoning ordinance through which the plaintiffs may dispute the basis for the, um, township's position. Understand, the Township Board took no action with respect to the special land use permit." The ordinance itself just simply says that upon violation, the, um, special land use permit is automatically void. Moving on to page thirteen of the complaint at paragraph seventy, it says, "The scheme to deprive plaintiffs of their vested property rights under the special land use permit culminated in an authorized and unilateral purported invalidation of plaintiff's special land use permit by the township." Again, the township took no action. The ordinance just says that if you violate the special land use permit, it's automatically invalidated. The next document is, uh, the answer that the township prepared to the complaint in affirmative defenses. Township denied all of the allegations, uh, of a legal sense against them. The township then filed a counter complaint against the Malarks alleging that they are conducting activities on the property that is not authorized by the special land use permit and not depicted on the approved site plan. If we turn to paragraph forty-five of the counter complaint, paragraph forty-five lists the activities that township believes that the Malarks are permitting on their property. They include the agribusiness, photography studio, dog park, campground for recreational vehicles, tents and trailers, sales of RV products, campground stores selling firewood essentials and local goodies, uh, hosting Harvest Host members, swimming pool use, outhouses available, weddings, parking for all, uh, uses listed, and walking trails. The significance of that is really in the answer to the complaint, which is the next document. And their answer to paragraph forty-five says, "Admitted in part and denied in part," says, "Counter defendants," which are the Malarks, "admit that they have used the property for an agribusiness, hosting Harvest Host members and parking for those uses. Counter defendants deny that they have used the property in a manner that would constitute a campground as defined in the township ordinance, and further deny that they have used the property for any of the other uses identified in paragraph forty-five." So they are denying the dog park and they're denying, uh, the photography studio, um, campground, outhouses, weddings, and the like. The next, uh, document is an amended, uh, I'm sorry, is the, um, Malark's answer to the counter complaint. Next document is their affirmative defenses. Again, uh, we went through the ones that they've denied, the substantive parts. The next document is a first amended counter complaint that I filed, uh, with the township or with the court that, um, lists additional items and corrects other things. The last document in this packet is the plaintiff's responses to defendant's first discovery request. During the course of a civil litigation, after the complaints have been filed and answered and any counter complaints have been filed and answered, there is a discovery period. A discovery period means that either side can ask the other side, uh, for information about, uh, whatever, um, their claim is their defenses, any information that may help substantiate the claims against them and the like. Discovery requests can be written. They can be in the form of interrogatories, which are questions to be asked and answered. They can be in the form of, uh, requests for documents, and they can be in the form of requests for admissions. Requests for admissions are simply asking the other side to admit certain facts. They have the option of admitting them or denying them. If they fail to answer within twenty-eight days, um, then there is an automatic presumption that it's a denial. And, um, they can object, but they can only object if they ha- lack sufficient information to answer the question. So as we look at some of the answers that we have, um, if we turn to page three, discovery request number two, interrogatory, please identify and describe any and all products you sell or have sold at your property in the Tyrone Township that you purchased from another source to sell. And their response is t-shirts, coffee mugs, honey, maple syrup, mosquito spray, soap, metal yard art, stone art, uh, yard art. Discovery request number seven, which is a request for documents. Um, I asked for certain documents. They said, "Please see attached." However, they failed to attach any documents. What I was seeking was information with respect to, uh, Harvest Host overnight staying, how that's arranged, what records we have of the number of vehicles that have been there on any given night. There's a threshold issue of, uh, five or more, um, RVs being at a location. If so, it is considered a campground by state law, and they have to comply with state law. Furthermore, if they have five or more, they have to comply with the requests of the township for a special land use permit for the campground, but we received no such documents. Discovery request number eleven on page five, again, is an interrogatory. It says, "Please identify and describe any and all events, special events, or uses on your property that you have hosted at your property in Tyrone Township." A, an event or special event or use means any event or occurrence where guests are invited to your property to participate in or observe an activity unrelated to the sale of Bear Naked Wood LLC wood products. Examples of events or special event or use includes weddings, health-related discussions, instructions, or any discussion group discussing any topic, photography, dog training, dog park, walking trails, swimming pool. The response was, "Plaintiff only hosted one event as defined in this interrogatory, which occurred on January, uh, twenty twenty-four." Says, "Plaintiff hosted a small health and wellness gathering inside the barn, which was promoted on Facebook." Discovery request twelve on page six. I asked for the insurance policy. They said attached, but it, they failed to attach it to their responses. Now, even though they have failed to attach it to their responses, um, it could very well be that, uh, they supplement these answers and provide those ans- or documents to us in the near future. Uh, discovery request number seventeen is a request for admission. It's on on page eight. It says, "Please admit that you have hosted overnight guests on the property in recreational vehicles, motorhomes, campers, or tents. Plaintiff submit that they have hosted such overnight guests, but no guest has ever stayed in a tent." The next number eighteen, "Please admit that a photography studio operates or has operated on the property." They admit, says, "Opened in twen- April of twenty twenty-five, closed for several months due to cease and desist orders from the township, but reopened in July of twenty twenty-five." Three local photographers have been on the property. Discovery number twenty, uh, is a request for admission. Says, "Please admit that portable restrooms, parentheses, outhouses, have been provided on the property for use by persons not residing on the property." The response is, "Admit that when the barn bathroom was under construction, a portage on was temporarily used for several months." Discovery request twenty-one, request for admission. Please admit that you have a dog park on your property that may be used with your permission by persons not residing on the property. Response, "A small fenced-in area for plaintiff's German shepherd and other animals to stay safe on plaintiff's thirty-four farm, acre farm, was publicly referred to by plaintiff's as a dog park. Plaintiff's host seven pets on SIF spot, but stopped when the township sent a cease and desist letter. Plaintiff's received fifty-eight dollars, sixty-one cents for hosting seven pets." Request number twenty-two is a request for admission. "Please admit that you sell products at your property, including t-shirts, mugs, recreational vehicles." They go on to respond, admit that plaintiff sells t-shirts, mugs, mosquito spray. It says, "All health-related products are sold by the Malarks online and not sold on the property." And I agree, that is the end of the highlighted portion of the discovery requests. So the thrust of the evidence is that the Malarks made application for an agribusiness. They list the other activities that they wish to pursue on their property. Agribusiness is defined by our zoning ordinance. It's specific. It has to be agriculturally related, uh, to the principal use of the property. The special land use permit was granted. The site plan was approved. The special land use permit provides for approval of the agribusiness. A letter was sent to the Malarks indicated as such. The agribusiness was approved. The site plan was approved. The site plan makes no provisions for overnight staying of RVs. It does not provide for RVs powering their RV with, um, generators. It provides nothing with respect to the, um, dog park, nothing with respect to weddings, nothing with respect to walking trails and things like that. The evidence indicates that there has been a violation of the special land use permit, but that permit was already automatically revoked pursuant to township ordinance on its own. The site plan that has been approved takes board action. If the Township Board believes that they have exceeded the scope of the site plan that has been approved, the Township has the discretion to revoke that site plan.
Right, thank you, Chuck. Right? Roger, yeah?
Are you all set?
Yes.
Okay. Is there an answer?
Yeah.
Grab that. Good evening. Uh, as I think all of you know, uh, my name is Roger Myers. I am the attorney representing, uh, Bear Naked Wood and the Malarks. Obviously here this evening, but, um, equally important, um, in the pending litigation that exists between the township and my clients, that's in Livingston County Circuit Court. That lawsuit, as Mr. Widmeyer indicated, was commenced by our office on behalf of the Malarks and Bear Naked Wood as a result of the township's action of, uh, taking the position that the Malark's special use permit was automatically revoked and threatened to shut down my client's business or take other action to interfere with their business operations. Um, it's our position, as clearly set forth in the documents that have been filed with the court and in the answer that we filed, that the township has absolutely no legal authority, number one, uh, that the ordinance that purports to automatically revoke the, uh, special use permit is beyond the scope of what, uh, legal authority the township possesses under Michigan law, particularly the Zoning Enabling Act, even if my clients were in fact in violation of the special use permit. But of course, uh, we very much dispute that there was a violation of the special use permit. And so the question that, um, at least initially, when the matter, um, was filed, uh, was, does the township have the legal authority to revoke the special u- or is it automatically revoked, um, under the township's ordinance? And, um, if they have that authority, was there a violation by the, by my clients that would have, um, effectuated that action? I'm not here to, to, to litigate that issue. The town- The township isn't here to litigate that issue, that's an issue that will be decided by the court. So I'm not going to really focus my discussion here this evening on the arguments and the disputes that we have with regard to the special use permit. That ship has sailed and the judge is ultimately going to make that determination. I will say however, though, I think to make the record clear, I realized Mr. Widmeyer was just providing a summary, he wasn't reading the documents word for word, but I think it is important that one of the things, one of the significant things that was overlooked and was a, a, a topic of significant discussion during the presentation was the existence of this photography studio that is at my client's property and is part of the facility that has been constructed. That was not mentioned by Mr. Widmeyer, it is in the packet, because it is part of the complaint that has been filed. And I think it's very important to not lose sight of that document, because number one, the document that, that I'm referring to is a, a report by the Carlisle-Wortman Firm, who is, or at least was, I don't know what their current status is, but at the time, they were this township's outside planning consultant that was engaged for the specific purpose of reviewing the Mylarx special land use application to determine, A, the scope of the request, B, whether it complies with the township zoning ordinances, and see whether they would recommend approval of that request. What was, what was omitted conspicuously from the presentation here this evening was the fact that during the Carlisle-Wortman Report, the township's own consultant specifically acknowledged that the agribusiness ordinance encompasses things such as the showroom, photo studio, and parking. That's, that's specifically in the report on page one of the report, which is actually page 122 of your packet for the meeting this evening. The other thing that it was, that was mentioned and analyzed by the Carlisle-Wortman Firm was, there were very specific hours of operation that were going to be proposed with regard to the photography studio as part of the agribusiness operations. And that, that analysis was provided on page 12 of the Carlisle-Wortman Report, page 133 in your board packet. The reason I raise that is because there's been the suggestion that, that the photography studio was never part of the application. Your own consultant's report dispositively refutes that. Your own consultant acknowledged and specifically recognized that was part of the, the application and it is within the parameters of your agribusiness ordinance. And so I think it's important to, to keep that in mind as, as you, as to the extent that the information that is submitted in the litigation is being considered as part of this process for the purported revocation of the site plan, that you have a, a complete picture, that your own consultant specifically acknowledged that this was part of the agribusiness, agritourism proposed use and, and recommended accordingly, that it be considered as such. So I, I stand by the, the information that's in the packet with regard to our position on the historical use of the property, the, the, the legal positions with regard to the special use permit. One thing I will address, Mr. Widmeyer, in his, his presentation, talked about the discovery responses, and there was a mention to the reference to attached documents. He claims there was no documents attached. I, I, that's news to me. I mean, our responses were sent two and a half weeks ago, my legal assistant sent it. I assume that they were sent. If they weren't, it was an oversight and I'll certainly forward it to him, but I would have expected that if it wasn't provided, and it was important for your consideration that, in this meeting tonight, that if you're truly interested in considering the information on the merits, that that would have been a request that would have been made prior to us being up here this evening. But be that as it may, I will provide that information and, and in due course, well, tomorrow, as part of the litigation. So the, the issue is not with regard to the special use permit, the issue is then, then, you know, if, if, if that's not what we're talking about, which, which, based upon what I understood and heard for the last hour and a half, it was all about the review of the information that's been submitted as part of the litigation in the special use permit. So if we're not talking about that and that's not before the board, then why are we here? Well, I think it's important, before we get to and answer the question of why we're here, I think it's important to, to initially talk about the process of, of how we are, have arrived here. And the specific process and ordinance provision that has been proposed as the basis for this board to consider a revocation of the special use permit is section 23.12 of your ordinance. It's, it's in the packet. And that's, that provision says that it, it references the approval expiration indoor revocation of, of a site plan. There's two paragraphs to this, this, this ordinance provision. I want to skip to the second paragraph. The second paragraph, and I'm going to quote, it says, "Any site plan approval may be revoked when the construction of said development is not in conformance with the approved plans." And then it goes on to say that, it, it, I'll just continue. "In which case, the township board shall give the applicant notice of its intention to revoke such land use at least 14 days prior to a review hearing of the permit by the township board. After conclusion of such review, the township board may revoke its approval of the development if it feels that a violation in fact exists and has not been remedied prior to such hearing." So that is your, that's your ordinance, that is the, the basis of, of why we're here. And I want to start with the first sentence that, that states that "Any site plan approval may be revoked when the construction of said development is not in conformance with the approved plans." I haven't heard anything throughout either the litigation or here this evening that there is a contention that the construction was defective or in, in contravention of the approved plans. All I've heard about is allegations of improper use, use beyond what was approved as part of the special use permit. There isn't any allegation that the, the parking is too small to accommodate what was required by the site plan. There isn't any allegation that the building was constructed larger than what was shown on the approved plans. There isn't any allegation of any other aspect of the construction of the development that is referenced in that particular provision. Quite frankly, I think the ordinance as written, even if we were talking about an allegation that there was non-compliance with construction relative to the approved plan, I don't believe that that is valid under the Zoning Enabling Act either. Because once a property owner under Michigan law, under the Zoning Enabling Act, receives a site plan, receives a building permit, and constructs a, a, an improvement based upon that site plan, that, that is what constitutes a vested interest under Michigan law, which creates a substantive due process right that a township, or city, or village has no ability to then unilaterally revoke if it disagrees with whether the, the construction has, has been in non-compliance or the use. There are other remedies that are available, and I'll talk about that in a minute, but the revocation of the permit, of the site plan, I should say, is not something that is at the disposal of a local government under Michigan law. Be that as it may, we're, that's not an issue that we even have to talk about, because of course, we're not talking about construction that's not in compliance with, with the site plan. So even if the, all of the allegations that have been made, which of course, we vehemently disagree, that there has been a use of this property in excess of what was approved under the special use permit, that still does not give this board any legal authority to revoke the site plan, because there has not been any allegation that the construction that was undertaken is in violation of the site plan. And so on that basis alone, there, there would be no, the, the, the suggestion that the site plan should be revoked has to be denied. With regard to the, the issue of, the, the second aspect of that part of the ordinance that I read, of the notice being provided, and if the, if, if it's not, if the violation continues up to the date of the hearing, then under that circumstance, the township can still consider a revocation, if we're talking about a construction issue. But of course, we're not, we're talking about a, we're talking about use issues. I've heard about porta potties that were used during the construction of the barn. That certainly didn't take place during the 14, in the last 45 days. The, the notice that was sent by, by the township for the purported revocation was in late August. So the only thing we can really talk about is what was still continuing between late August and currently. Because if it's not, if it's not continuing to occur during the time period of late August until tonight, today, you don't even have the authority under that provision of your ordinance to revoke the site plan, because it's a discontinued use, even if it had been occurring previously. Let's talk about weddings, for example. There was, obviously, there's been presentation of, of, of marketing by my clients or others about the, the property being potentially used for weddings. But as we've made clear in the response, there has never been a wedding hosted at this property. And there certainly hasn't been any evidence presented by Mr. Widmeyer or anyone else to, to suggest that there has been. The fact that somebody's marketing something online does not equate to use. And so the, 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 the dog and pony show of, of, of this marketing scheme as some sort of a substitute for the requirement to actually show that this occurred, you know, between late August and now, is just completely insufficient. Same thing with the dog park. There, there was acknowledgement that, that, and we call it a dog park? I don't know that, that a, a, a dog park per se is, is defined in, in the township's ordinance. Well, my, my client called it a dog park, because it's been used by guests, they could, you know, use the, the, the park or the property that has been fenced off. But nonetheless, as was indicated in the documentation, when they received a cease and desist letter from Mr. Widmeyer earlier this year, they, they ceased doing that. So there's, there's no evidence before you on that either, that there has been any use that continued after the notice was sent until this evening. And so that as well is another example of the lack of any evidence that would, would enable the township to exercise this ordinance provision, even if it did apply beyond the construction to the actual use of the property. So for all of those reasons, your ordinance on its face undermines any purported ability or authority for you to actually revoke the site plan. It doesn't give you the authority to do what, what has been suggested here, and it, it, it is not an enforceable basis for you to exercise that authority. I've been doing, I've been litigating and focusing my practice on zoning and land use for over 30 years, and I can tell you, I've litigated all over the state of Michigan in state and federal court. This is the first time I have ever, in my 30-plus years' career, where I have ever seen a township, or a city, or a village seek to revoke, revoke a site plan based upon the use of the property and, and any purported non-compliance. That, that, that's not a, a, a basis or legal authority that a local government has. The remedy in that situation is for the township to pursue a, and to, to consider a non-compliance as a nuisance. That, that's the remedy the township has. And in fact, your own ordinance, section 30.4, 30.14, specifically says that if there's any violation of the ordinance, site plan, any of the requirements, conditions, the township can pursue an abatement of the nuisance through a court order. Well, that's what we're, that's what we're doing, right? We're, we're in court right now, because the township is taking the position that the special use permit has been automatically revoked, and therefore, it's a nuisance, and that's the counterclaim that's currently pending in Circuit Court. We disagree with that, but that's the remedy. The township has the remedy that's already being pursued in Circuit Court, that's, that was reviewed by Mr., by Mr. Widmeyer at length here earlier this evening. So that in and of itself as well demonstrates that this notion of, of attempting to empower the board to revoke the site plan based upon these circumstances is beyond your lawful authority. The other thing I would like to make, which I think is very important, is that after the complaint was filed in the pending litigation, my clients received a, a letter from the Michigan Department of Agriculture that their use of the property is protected by the Right to Farm Act. They specifically requested, at my direction, that the Department of Agriculture conduct an investigation of their property to determine whether the manner in which their operating, their entire business operations are governed by the provisions of the Right to Farm Act, and specifically, there are administrative rules called generally accepted agricultural management practices, or GAMS, is what they're commonly referred to as. And these are, these are procedures that are promulgated by the Department of Agriculture, and if a property owner's operation of their property constitutes a farm in compliance with one or more of the GAMS, and there's, there's a significant number of GAMS that exist under the Right to Farm Act, then that is protected by the Right to Farm Act, even if the, or even if that land use activity blatantly violates a conflicting township ordinance. The township ordinance, the township doesn't have the authority to enforce an ordinance in conflict with a property owner's rights under the Right to Farm Act. And so on August 25th, 2025, which was after this lawsuit was commenced, my clients received the letter from the Department of Agriculture. And I thought it was interesting that although there was a plethora of information about the litigation and, and wedding advertising for events that never happened, there wasn't the right to, the letter from the Department of Agriculture about their rights under the Right to Farm Act in the packet. Have you, it was, it was sent to my clients and copied to the Livingston County Clerk and the Tyrone Township Clerk. Have, have you all seen this letter? I don't have. I, I have copies, and I certainly want to make it part of the record.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you, Roger.
So I've handed all of you a copy of the, the notification letter that my clients received from the Michigan Department of Agriculture, and it talks about the, the onsite visit that was conducted in accordance with the, the Department of Agriculture's authority. The review focused on, in the, the last part of the first paragraph, it says, "The review focused on farm market GAMS." And I'll, I'll elaborate that on a little further. So what the Department of Agriculture was doing was they were looking at their, the business operations that the, the Malarks were, were operating under, to determine whether it was protected by, or, or being conducted in accordance with these farm market GAMS, which would then give them the protection under the Right to Farm Act. They, they then say, "Based on the evaluation of your operation located at the property address, I've concluded the following. The farm market GAMS identifies trees and tree products as farm products. The documentation submitted indicates that most retail space in your showroom is dedicated to tree products created from trees grown on your property under your control. Your farm market create retail spaces, your farm market retail spaces are greater than 160 feet from non-farm residences. The Department of Agriculture has determined currently your farm operation conforms to the farm market GAMS." What's important about this is that, number one, the, the Department of Agriculture has made a definitive determination that my client's property and their operations are covered by the farm market GAMS, and therefore, their, their land use is protected by the, the Right to Farm Act. What's also important is that they reference that, that its most retail space is dedicated to the tree products, but, but they're acknowledging that not all of it is. And that's important, because the, the GAMS, the farm market GAMS and the Right to Farm Act do not require that every single use of the property be directly related to the farm operations. In other words, in this particular case, it doesn't require for, for my clients to be protected by the GAMS and the Right to Farm Act, that the 100% of their business operations are harvesting wood, creating wood furniture. The, the, the GAMS and the Right to Farm Act also encompasses ancillary uses that, that are indeed ancillary to what is the primary focus and the primary use related directly to the farm operation. And I'll give you a, a really good example of this. I, we, there's been this discussion about weddings, and even though my clients haven't conducted weddings, I had a client haven't conducted weddings, I had a client, um, in Marion Township, Livingston County, uh, a couple of years ago, who had a farm, uh, and also constructed a barn and started hosting weddings. And they went through the process and were, and were spec, were unambiguously denied the right to host weddings by that township. It wasn't even, as we're dealing here, whether it was within the scope of the approval or not, there was no question in that situation, the township outright denied my client's ability to host weddings. They got, uh, an approval from the Department of Agriculture indicating that, um, you know, they, they were considered to be in compliance with the farm market GAMPs, and therefore were, uh, covered by the, and protected by the Right to Farm Act. The township disagreed and, and took the position that because that was not a core aspect of their farm, that that was not something that was protected by the Right to Farm Act. We ended up in litigation in Livingston County Circuit Court, and ultimately, um, the, the judge determined that in fact, what the wedding, um, venue and hosting of weddings, corporate parties, birthday parties, anniversary parties, hosting all of these social events in their facility was considered to be activity that was protected by the farm market GAMPs and the Right to Farm Act. So all of those ancillary activities, sale of ancillary retail products, hosting weddings, hosting all of these social events, because they were ancillary to the core farming operations, and the farming operations still represented the predominant use of the property, that, that created an umbrella that protected all of those issues. And the judge not only awarded, uh, and ruled in my client's favor in that situation, um, and that it was protected, but because the, the Right to Farm Act statute requires a prevailing property owner who's being litigated against by a, a township in violation of their, um, their Right to Farm Act, uh, rights, uh, the statute, uh, requires that the property owner be reimbursed their attorney fees. So my client not only won in circuit court in Livingston County, but they were also, we also ended up negotiating a settlement, uh, regarding the amount of attorney fees to be reimbursed. The case is AJR versus Marion Township, if you are interested, um, it was decided about two years ago. Um, so there is, there is unequivocal precedent, um, that I've personally been involved with as a lawyer on behalf of a, a, an unfortunate client, similar to my, the situation my clients find themselves in, where you have a township seeking to completely undermine their property rights that are unequivocally protected at a minimum by the Right to Farm Act. And I, as I mentioned earlier, I find it very i- i- interesting that that info, well, what I think is probably the most important piece of information, um, is that, uh, to, to, to be considered as part of this issue was not part of the packet. Be that as it may, um, the, so given, given the, the, the defect with regard to the language of the township's ordinance, my client's unequivocal rights under the Right to Farm Act, um, why are we here? Why, why are we continuing with the charade? And I think you all know the answer to that question, okay? Let's, let's not kid ourselves. This, this, you, you have, and I've, I've seen the info, I've seen the documents and the communication, you have a couple of gadfly residents who, who don't live near the property, who have, who are not impacted the property, and who have nothing better to do than to, um, manipulate you into abusing your authority as an elected official in seeking to interfere with my client's property rights and shut down a small business for his purely political reasons. That's the only reason we're here. And I think it's very important that the record is very clear that that's, that that's my client's position, and will certainly be, uh, what we will be, um, advocating when we go to circuit court if you ultimately make the decision and include that as part of the pending litigation to revoke the site plan. And so, and if you do, um, choose to, uh, to revoke the site plan without any authority under your ordinance, or in contravention of my client's rights under the Right to Farm Act, it'll just represent another example of the abuse of power. And you can fully expect that, um, I, I, I mean, I should say, I fully expect that you're going to, to, um, to, to, to take the, the position and ultimately, um, revoke the site plan. I, I, we, we fully expect that's going to be the case, because ultimately we understand that the merits of the dispute have nothing to do with, uh, the ultimate decision. Um, but I, I do want to just reiterate as the final thing to keep in mind, that, um, if in fact you do take that approach, it will continue to constitute from our perspective an act of harassment, uh, in violation of my client's rights, particularly under the Right to Farm Act, and will, uh, just further enhance the township's liability and exposure for at a minimum the attorney fees. And, and if, if that's the direction that you take for the motivated reasons that I've articulated, shame on you. You, you, the, the residents of Marion Township deserve better, they deserve to have a board that's a good steward of their resource, of their resources, and to not, to pursue frivolous litigation for the sake of, of advocating a political vendetta or engaging in a political hijab. So, uh, on behalf of my client, this, this, this whole thing, this whole process is a charade, it's, it's completely without merit, and there shouldn't be a revocation of the site plan. Any else? Okay. Thank you.
Did you see this?
Did you see that?
Yes, I have seen that letter. Um, I have a request.
I mean, I mean, it's great if that's all they were doing. According to the letter.
Yes, I, I, they would have you believe that if you have a operation that's protected under the Right to Farm Act, that means you can open a gas station too.
Yeah, yeah. In other words, if I build something that meets the special land use, just the building, I can run whatever business I want out of it. In a residential area? Is that, is that what I just heard?
That's, that's what the other side wants you to believe.
Do you got any, I'm just, you got a rebuttal?
I don't have any rebuttal. Um, I would comment that, um, as you saw from the documents that I had, um, they seem to deny at times, uh, some of the activities and later admit them. If they were all protected under the Right to Farm Act, they would never deny that they're doing it. Is, and I'll, I'll comment with respect to the site plan. Mr. Myers is focusing on the construction aspect of it. That doesn't necessarily mean limited to the brick and mortar, but even if it was, there's nothing on the site plan that shows where the dog park was. The ordinance requires that you show where fencing's at. There's a fence back there. Doesn't show where you're going to park overnight guests, doesn't show where you're going to have generators. So the site plan did not detail those things than they were required to, and they used it in violation of what they presented.
Any other comment, Roger? Rebuttal or?
Well, I guess the only thing I would say is that, with regard to the last comment that Mr. Widmeyer stated, you have to keep in mind that, that the litigate, some of the questions regarding litigation relate to what may have transpired in the past, okay? So if we're talking about, like, like use of that dog park, for example, it was admitted that it was used at, at one point in time, but then it was ceased and desist, and now it's, it's not, it hasn't been used. And, and I, so, you, you need to separate the timing, and, and the suggestion that there's inconsistency is not accurate. Because whereas it may have existed at one point in time, and the question relates to what was happening at a particular point in time, or at any point in time in the, in the past, versus what we're, what's being done now, those are two totally separate questions. And you can't take them out of context and say, oh, well, there's an inconsistency. There, everything is entirely consistent with the responses that were given, it's just that there's different timeframes that we're talking about of when something was being done versus when something is not being done. So I just wanted to clarify that.
All right. Thank you. All right, then I guess I'll, uh...
Well, Chuck, I have a question. You said, as soon as they did something that was out of that scope, it was automatically revoked, correct?
There are two aspects. One is the special land use permit, and the other one is the site plan. The special land use permit, uh, provision in the ordinance says, "Upon violation of the special land use permit, it's automatically revoked." That's by ordinance. The township board doesn't have to take any action. Violation of the site plan requires the township board to take action. That's what we are here today for. It's limited to the site plan.
So do we have any evidence? Um, their attorney stated there were no weddings there. Do we have any evidence of that?
We have the advertisements, you've seen the evidence that we have. Um, and so do we have pictures of a wedding occurring there? No, we do not. Um, do we have evidence from people that have come forward and said, "I was there in a wedding"? No, we do not. However, we do have evidence that they are hosting Harvest Host guests overnight. There are campers, there are recreational vehicles and motorhomes that the site plan provides no information on. Got to keep in mind, one of the reasons that we have site plan requirements is so that the planning commission and the township board can take a look at how this may affect surrounding properties. And so you are supposed to provide all of the uses that you are making of your property. If you fail to do so, then the planning commission and the township board does not have the ability to weigh the impact of these uses that aren't mentioned on the surrounding properties. Generators make noise. If you have recreational vehicles that have no electrical hookup that's provided, they have to have generators. Generators make noise. And so the township planning commission and the board should have the ability to evaluate the noise impact on the neighbors. The same thing with traffic for dog parks and the noise from the dogs themselves. The township planning commission and the board may agree, that's fine, but they should be able to review all of the issues with respect to the use of the property as a dog park. And yet they did not provide any of that information to the township. We had no clue. Township had no clue that they were going to be doing a dog park. And as we saw, one of the first documents we saw was the sign at the road, "Dog Park", Harvest Host. And so there's, there's ample evidence that they have exceeded the scope of the site plan because of these items are not shown, depicted on the site plan, and frankly, the use statement that they provided with the application for the special land use permit said nothing with respect to Harvest Host or Dog Park. And for that fact, it doesn't talk about the sales of the other products, the cups, the t-shirts, the, the bug repellent. Makes no mention.
All right, um, the board all set? We'll, I'll open it up for public comment. Uh, do I have anybody looking to make a comment?
Say my name?
Yes, please.
Sri Talia Masali. Um, I'm here in support of the business of the Bear Naked Wood and their owners, Mike and Becky. Um, you as a township board should be working with and embracing your small business owners to move ahead in building creativity, innovation, and to be a welcoming township to new visitors coming into the area, to promote unique businesses such as Bear Naked Wood, and not be a detraction by way of diminishing the wealth or reputation of someone or business. By you denying them their special land, uh, use permit, you're harming their small business and will affect their livelihood immensely with no accommodation whatsoever as to what you have deemed a violation of their land use permit. Clearly, you're targeting this business in a partisan manner by way of some of you board members that are clearly biased and will be violating that, that business's rights. Mike and Becky are nothing but kind and generous people, they're a blessing to the community, they're promoting biz, that business that resides here in this township for people to come and visit and enjoy, and enjoy what they have, they, they have to offer here, uh, in protecting their rights and how they operate their business. You choose to work with, you can choose to work with this business and the owners to come to a mutual understanding and not revoke their special land permit, which would violate their rights and due process. You as the township board should be more focused on enticing other community residences to open small businesses and contribute to your township's growth and prosperity in a more positive and inviting way, which you don't. And you give guidance to those businesses versus what you're trying to do here today, all of you. So if you have a family member that wants to move here and wants to start a small business, are you going to treat them the same way? Oh, you can't do this, you can't do that, you, are you going to work with them? Or are you just going to target people because of your bias? Um, I support them because they're dedicated to their craftsmanship, they're devoted to their business, making this a great community, um, to live in. They moved here, they didn't have to move here, but they moved here because this is a beautiful area. You should be embracing that. You should want more small businesses coming here. You want more people to come and enjoy your township. You know, this is, this is part of growing and being, uh, good, uh, neighbors. Um, I'm just going to say that I don't think you should rescind their special land permit. Obviously, they've worked very hard and to build upon their business, and I thank you for your time.
First of all, I'd like to start out with the attorney. Our planner does not decide what we get on our special land use permits. He just reviews them. He's trying to make it sound like the planner made those decisions. He doesn't. And I think if Chris remembers several meetings, how we got on the planner, because he was making recommendations, and we instructed him, that, that was our attorney's job to instruct us on the legal part. But I guess Chris forgot about that. All right. So here we go. He's going to try to blame it on the planner, giving him approval. Planners do not give approval. He's a lawyer, he knows better. He knows better. I'm not, I'm not attacking him, I'm just telling you. The, the board, no, the board makes the, the final decision. That's what they don't know. That's okay, they laughed about the lawsuit too, both of them, all of them. So, here we go. First of all, I want to ask our attorney and our board, which Chris was involved, wife was involved with the products that were in question in the beginning, that they were there, we have it there, they were setting up the, the, the building. We got them on record being there during the process. He should, definitely got to recuse himself. He's got to recuse himself, he's got too much conflict of interest here. And I mean it. All right. So, I want to make one thing, another thing perfectly clear. I did say something in the beginning about Bear Naked Woods, about what I saw. I only questioned it. Were they approved for this process, this thing? And I was told no. And in the, in, in the past, we always had to make a complaint. And before all the election, we all complained, no. We don't want to do that anymore. We would like them to get warnings. And I specifically said, nobody said about shutting them down. We just wanted to warn them, they're in violation. That's all it was to be, a warning. All this stuff that went on and on and on was their choice. All the evidence on those videos, and there's a lot more, they're all provided by Becky Millark on social media, which she says me and another person hacked their sites. I never hacked their sites. I mean, the attacks, I mean, all I did was ask a question. The lies. I mean, I got two failed marriages, I got, I got fired from my job, I mean, just, just lying attacks from them. It's, I got it all screenshot. Everything's screenshot. Oh, she's going to bury me on her property with her, with her truck, or her tractor, I'm sorry. Then her dog that's in her dog pen, I better not come over there, this dog's mean. I mean, what if a lawyer's seen all that? All these attacks, I mean, I got, I got the screenshots. I mean, this is a woman that's running a business in our township? Unbelievable.
You know, it's a shame we have to be here. I've watched this whole thing unfold, and I've sought information on how we've gotten to this point. Plenty of us residents have a very good understanding of how we have gotten to this point. We have people in the community that have such a hate, hatred for one of the, one or a couple of township trustees, they've made it their personal vendetta, that any person that has any affiliation with them should be subject to, targeted for participating with them. I filed a FOIA request and asked... I filed a FOIA request and asked, how many people, how many formal complaints have been filed against Bear Naked Woods? FOIA requests come back, zero. I came into the Township Office. I spoke to Ross Nicholson. I asked Ross Nicholson, what is the basis for this special land use violation in this proceeding? Who are the people that complained? How many neighbors came in here and complained about noise, the business operations, and whatever else is taking place there? The answer was zero. Not a complaint from any of the neighbors. What I did get was that there were 30 verbal complaints filed by one person I'm going to refer to as Karen D. That person is the same person that seems to believe he's on the Board and he yields authority. The same person who has gone after another business within the township and the only complainant that was on record at a Planning Commission meeting a couple meetings ago. I think a lot of this stuff is trivial, and I can tell you from personal experience. I know a couple, I have a couple farmer friends who have had issues under the Right to Farm Act. And I'm going to tell you, generally speaking, it does not end well for the Townships. Typically, you'll find that the authority of the Townships is not going to supersede state law. So, I would take that under advisement. That's my, I think you got some really great free advice here from their attorney. If you choose to move forward, I think you can expect that the amount of legal fees are going to be astronomical. Because I've seen, like I said, people that have been aggrieved, they've gone through the process, and they've turned around, they've won, and they've won substantial amounts of money for people violating their rights. So, you guys all have the opportunity to do the right thing and turn around and not revoke their special land use permit. And the last thing is, I have no clue as to why Chuck wanted to bring up Jeanette Rapetta's name in the middle of this conversation at one point when she had nothing to do with any of Bear Naked Woods' business.
Anybody else?
I'm here tonight to speak in support of Mike and Becky Millar and their small family business, Bear Naked Wood. They've poured their heart and soul into creating something positive for this community. Instead of finding ways to support small businesses like theirs, it feels as though this township is looking for reasons to tear them down. Have any of you ever been to this amazing business? I've read through the meeting packet, and I noticed that the photo studio was clearly mentioned multiple times in their application. Both the Planning Commission and the Board reviewed and approved that plan. And at no point were there any conditions or objections raised about the photo studio. So, how can something that was openly presented, a photo studio, suddenly become a reason to revoke their site plan? If it wasn't addressed back then, that means it was accepted. Please don't let injustice prevail here tonight. What's being done to this small business and its owners is wrong, and deep down, you know it's wrong.
Anybody else? Sure. Steve?
Good evening. My name is Steve Hasbrook. I live at 8038 Fawcett Road. I had spent a lot of time with the agribusiness ordinance language when it was first put into place quite a number of years ago now, but, you know, when the Planning Commission people write those ordinances, there's always, none of them are perfect. This one, it was developed with a fairly wide scope, the way I felt about it, and there was always people that want to throw some percentages in and things like that, and it just, it's going to make things contentious. Always does. So, I just want to make that a point. You know, there's the township and applicants, there needs to be some give and take when you have businesses like this, like the Millar's have. I've been there, to their property a few times, and it's a really nice built place. Clean, safe looking, the building's nice, the Millar's are very good hosts. They're a harvest host, you know? How can that be a terrible thing? I'm a camper, so I, you know, we actually camped there one time, my wife and I. We were coming back on a trip, and we weren't able to go where we were going to end up, and we stayed overnight there. And they were just very hospitable, and we are going to do business with them, they're going to build us some furniture. My wife loves it there, so I need to respect that. And I think that, you know, I read all the documentation, the attorneys, both Roger and Chuck, and, you know, they pick and choose, obviously. You know, especially your attorney only read parts of areas, and I just want the people in this township to know that under supplemental regulations, every residential property can have a visitor with an RV, so it's right in the ordinance. The ordinance, you know, my experience with it, nobody reads all of it. They only read portions of it, so you can't, you don't have all the information if you do that. So, like I say, if you want to look at it, it's under temporary housing. If you have a visitor come, and it doesn't say it has to be a family member, it's just a visitor. So, I'm not going to dispute the five and up, your campground. You know, that could be fixed by just them saying, well, we'll only have four, you know, at the most, that one time. Need to be some give and take, you know? This attorney stuff and lawsuits are ridiculous.
Thanks, Steve.
John Nagel, 8200 Heartland Road, Tyrone Township, for Tyrone Township for 30 years now. Kind of going to go over what the last gentleman stated. Anybody can be a harvest host. Harvest host is a group of people that just provide overnight stay for somebody that just needs some help, for whatever reason. They had a blown tire on the highway, they can't get to the destination, they look up harvest host instead of spending it in a parking lot or anywhere else. It's a group, it's a group. It's an organization. It's not moneymaker. Nobody does that for moneymaking. So, I don't see it in the ordinance. I'm a trailer owner, camper as well. It's a great organization. It's somebody that's, they're out there to help you. So, I've got no issue with that. The Millar's I've known for 30 years, 30-plus years. They've built a beautiful business. They do fantastic work. Their property is beautiful. Mike creates some of the nicest pieces of woodworking that I've seen, and I'm in the business, so I understand. Part of my job is to read ordinances every day in my land work. So, I read ordinances. There's great areas in every ordinance out there on the planet. But I have no issues with what they're doing over there. I hope the Board doesn't continue to proceed and fight a battle that costs the Township money. We have way better things to do in this township with our money than to spend it on this. That's my opinion. So, thank you.
All right, Jeanette?
Jeanette Rapetta, Tyrone Township resident. Yeah, I'd like to know also why Chuck mentioned my name out of all the people in all that documentation making public comments. We all know why. I'm here tonight to speak about Mike and Becky and their small business. And I did attend the meetings where this application was discussed, both before the Planning Commission and the Township Board, watched and listened to Carlisle Wartman. Yeah, they don't make the decisions, but they certainly help guide. I listened to those officials who asked questions and those who wished them well, and I heard and read the Township's list of conditions for approval. And for those of us who read the packet, we see what the conditions were. We see what wasn't mentioned. Therefore, we know what was approved. What is wrong with this township? That your processes, procedures, comprehension are so lacking? Many residents, after reading the packet, reached out to me and said, "I just don't get why they're going after this business." And so, I tell them why. Early on, when Planning Commissioner Kevin Ross learned that I am a friend of Becky's, he started attacking them online. He stalked Becky's Facebook profile, recorded a video from there, and he announced that he would be getting this issue on the agenda. Now, doesn't that sound like an official making a decision for a Board outside of the meeting? And he's been relentless. Township issues with Bear Naked Woods, they know that Kevin Ross has an extreme hatred for them and for me. I'm not making it up. Go watch and see what's online, and you see it, Herman. You see it every day. I see you liking stuff. So, you found a path, thanks to him, to get the Rapettas, and the public sees exactly what you're doing. And you're trying to rewrite history to justify your little punishment that you want to give. And even though some of the Board and Planning Commission members have changed since this, they were approved, every one of you has access to the same records, packets, minutes, and videos. You don't have to pick and choose like he did tonight about what you read. Go read it all. This isn't about compliance, it's about the lack of consistency, fairness, and integrity. The community, residents, and business owners should be able to trust their local government to honor its own approvals, and you have not proven to be trustworthy. The residents of this township are watching closely, and we're hoping tonight's decision reflects not politics, not a witch hunt, and not pressure, but principle instead. And for the record, I would like to say that Scott Dietrich keeps coming up here and saying that I'm in business with them. We've never filed a tax return, we have no business together, and I'm sick of the lies. Thank you.
Hey, hey.
What's he talking to me for?
Out. Both of you.
I'm not leaving.
Go on.
He talked to me.
I don't need it. All right. Is there any more public comment? Oh, one more.
My name is Lois Spoor. I live on Walnut Shores. I don't think it's in the best interest of Tyrone Township to revoke the site plan of Bear Naked Wood. I do believe that a situation like this might be better served with conversations rather than lawsuits. If there are pieces of the site plan that need to be looked at again, let's do that. Let's follow a process, not battle personalities.
We all set? Chuck, I have a question for you.
Would that, would it be during the Board meeting that we do that?
Well, it's part of the public hearing here because I, many people have made a comment, and I think it needs to be clear that Bear Naked Woods is suing us, correct?
That is correct. They filed the lawsuit.
So, we're defending the Township?
Yes. And if I can give you a little bit more background on that. The Township Zoning Department sent a letter to the Millar's early on saying, "We believe you're in violation. Come back to us. Amend your site plan. Go through the process. Have a discussion with us."
That was my second question. I wanted to ask you, how many times did the Planning and Zoning Department reach out to the Millar's and ask them to come in and revisit?
I can't give you the exact number.
I know it is multiple times.
And I have a letter that expresses just what I have said.
Multiple times. We have asked them to come in and revisit. All right. I've closed public remarks. I guess we close the public hearing? I need a motion to close the public hearing, please.
So moved. Support.
All in favor?
Before we do that, Greg, at the end, before we vote, are we going to be able to ask Chuck any more questions?
Yeah, when we turn forward.
All right, I just want to make sure before I vote it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. We will move into the approval of the agenda for any changes.
I move to approve the agenda as printed.
So, in a second? All in favor?
All right.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, approval of the consent agenda. The Township Board minutes, October 7, 2025. The Treasurers' report, September 30, 2025. And the Clerks' warrants and bills, October 15, 2025. So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Communications to receive and place on file. Livingston County Sheriff's report, September 30, 2025. The monthly budget report, September 30, 2025. The Planning Commission approval minutes, September 9, 2025. And the Planning Commission meeting synopsis, October 14, 2025.
Greg, I have a question, if I may, on the budget item.
Please, yes.
I appreciate the budget, the monthly budget reports. This past year, we violated the resolution from last year as a Board, Resolution Number 240302, which requires us by February 1, no later than February 1, the Board shall meet in a special work session to review the requests of each department, Board, and Commission to make recommendations on the content of the proposed fiscal year budget, ensuring that the total estimated expenditures does not exceed the total estimated revenue and accumulated fund balance. So, what I'm asking for, because we violated this resolution last February, earlier this year, that we have the new, the new resolution that was given, and we prepare to hold that special meeting, which brings in front of the Board all of the different departments to discuss these things openly with the Board per the resolution. So, I'm just asking for that. So I'm just asking for that to be a reminder to us, to make sure that we follow the resolution this coming year, so that we don't skip the process of meeting and understanding each department's needs on the budget.
If I may add to that, Mr. Chairman. I would like to know if the definition of work session would happen within the scope of a regular board meeting, or if that needs to be scheduled separately? If we could look into that?
We'll do that.
Thank you.
We'll probably do it just during a board meeting, but I'll look into it. Okay, thank you, Chris, for the reminder. Guess I'm looking for a motion for, to approve the communications?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Greg, can we take a recess?
Need a recess? All right. I'm gonna have a short recess.
Make a motion. Make them five minutes.
Yeah, I need a motion.
I make a motion. Take a recess.
Support.
All in favor? Five minutes.
Aye.
Five minutes, hurry.
Run fast.
Well, we see who's getting up.
I hear the joints creaking.
Tell getting old.
Tell getting old.
It's because you're shaking the pitch to the Elvis hits.
Saw that yawn.
Think I saw you doing what I was talking about.
I haven't talked that long in a while.
Yeah, I know. And it's only three days.
Yep, all right. We're in the act.
Yep, all right. We're in the act.
Yep, all right. We're in the act.
Yep, I know.
Yeah, I know.
And it's only three days.
Yep, all right.
We're in the act.
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 Yep, all right.
We needed a break.
We needed to hit the rest of them.
Okay, let's get back to session here.
All right. We lost Pamela. We lost Pamela. I must have added them. And we're at, public remarks on the agenda items only.
Well, Bear Naked Wood on the agenda.
Yeah, that's on the agenda.
Roger Myers, counsel for Bear Naked Wood and Milarcs. I just want to comment on, there was a discussion about, there was multiple opportunities to invite the milarcs in to work with the township, and, not surprisingly, but unfortunately, that's just blatantly false. There was discussions in the spring regarding the township's position, that what they were doing was unlawful. At that point, the lawyers got involved. I was not representing my client at the time. Jeffrey Bigelman was representing them. He was sending letters back and forth with Mr. Widmeyer, ultimately culminating in a letter, he sent, Mr. Bigelman sent a letter on April 14 explaining the position of the milarcs, asking to try to work through these issues. Mr. Widmeyer responded on May 14, 2025, disputing the letter and claiming that the special use permit had been automatically revoked, and that my client should cease all operations, all business whatsoever with regard to the property. Mr. Bigelman sent a letter back to Mr. Widmeyer dated May 30. He expressed dismay that the township was taking this rogue position of just wanting to completely shut them down. He then, in the last page, he states, and I'll quote, and I'm gonna give this and can be part of the record, "This is clearly an issue where reasonable minds can disagree, which is why I reached out to you and again reiterate my request to work through these matters." And then in the next paragraph, he concludes, "Once again, I request a call to discuss this, which can be done in person, by video, or telephone." So there was multiple efforts by my client, the predecessor attorney for my client, to work through these issues. The township took a stone wall position that the special use permit had been revoked. Ultimately, there was a meeting that I attended in this room, and the first thing that was stated by you, Mr. Carnes, we got in this room is, "When is your client gonna completely eliminate any use of the property and bring this property into compliance?" There was no effort to try to work through anything. They were, you were demanding that my client capitulate to the illegal demands of the township in furtherance of their political vendetta. And to distort the record and to try to rewrite history and make it appear like the township was being the good guy and my clients were being the bad guy is just completely false. So I will submit my two letters, and they can be part of the record, Mr. Widmeyer's letter of May 14, 2025, and Mr. Bigelman's letter of May 30, 2025 that I read from. Thank you.
I think they're already part of the record.
Yep, they are.
Those two, and there were some other letters that were in the record, but they're in the record twice now.
We have any other public comment? Agenda item?
Scott Dietrich, White Lake Road. All right, let's make one thing clear. Special land use permit was sought by the milarcs, correct? Correct. Anybody else performing anything on that property wasn't covered under a special land use permit. The photographers aren't. They didn't come seek a special land use permit. So if I open, get a special land use permit on my property, I can let every Tom, Dick, and Harry come run a business through my garage. That's basically what they're saying. And all the products that they don't develop there, the signs, the mugs, metal stuff, whatever they don't produce, those are made by somebody else offsite. Those aren't covered under a special land use permit, I don't believe. I mean, they didn't get the product out their property. They didn't make it. I mean, it's not too hard to figure out. I don't know, I just, it's just hard for me to believe that they can do so much on their property, make it, turn that barn into a mini mall. And one of the neighbors over there says, "We need to have business come in here. We need to protect them." Well, yeah, we want business in here. That's why we have a master plan. That's why we have warranties. We set up property on 23 for this. When you become so damn big, they attacked one of the residents in our township, and I'm gonna commend the man. They attacked him so bad, he has worked out of his home. He got so big, he was respectful to his neighbors. He went up in Fenton and got a commercial piece of property and opened up there. Because he didn't want, he had such big equipment, he didn't want to infringe on his neighbors. The purpose of this board and the Planning Commission is to make it fair for all residents, not one or the other. It's not political. You spent hundreds of thousands of dollars for my home. I spent tons of thousands of dollars for taxes. I didn't move next to an asphalt plant. I didn't move next to a marijuana facility. I didn't move next to Urban Lake. These are all the things we fought for together. But all of a sudden, now, we're gonna pick one individual, and we're gonna say, "Oh, well, we're picking on him." And when it's all because of Chris Ropetta, and as Net said, it had nothing to do with you. You were involved in some of the stuff that went on there. But you know what? I went over there in the beginning. It was beautiful. They got nice products. But you know what? All anybody asked was, "Stay in line with your special land use permit." Is that so damn hard? I would ask anybody that. And that's what we come to these meetings for, and that's what we develop a master plan for, so we can all live in harmony. And apparently, some people just get special preferences. You know all about that, don't you, Chris?
We have to, I feel, make it clear that Scott Dietrich is not an attorney. He should not be giving legal advice to the board. He's also not on the board.
Hang on, hang on. How is this related to the agenda? Let's stay with the agenda.
I am. We're talking, we have all the legal opinions. We have attorneys here, and every meeting, he comes up and speaks as if he's on the board. We did this. We did that. He's not on the board. And he's not an attorney.
We know that.
You listen to him, you, he agrees. You know, he's not an attorney. He should not be giving legal advice.
I don't see Scott on the agenda.
No, Scott's comments and the whole legal reason why we're here tonight. Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Quick comment. There seems to be, to me, that maybe there's a comprehension issue with some people here. Did anybody really listen about the Right to Farm Act? I mean, because I keep hearing everything on the special land use part, but I don't hear anybody, you know, when you have residents come up here and state that there's offsite products, they shouldn't be here, they're not produced. I think we've got a very clear picture of what products are allowed to be produced and brought into a business from outside under the Right to Farm Act. Pretty simple. So that's the only issue I want to bring back up, because it seems that there's people keep regurgitating the special land use permit, but you also have to put into consideration the Right to Farm Act.
Thank you, Gordon. Anybody else?
I mainly just want to remind, or rather, maybe add a little extra additional information as opposed to what Mr. Myers says. There was a, April 16, there was an attempt by the milarcs to have a minor site amendment that was pulled the day of the 16th. It was pulled, I was up there, and I remember John, who's the chairman, had said, Kevin, or said to all of us, "Guys, we're not gonna be discussing this tonight," because they had, the milarcs had decided to, instead of amend and reapply for the, reapply, which is what the subcommittee had agreed that they would do, they decided to file a lawsuit instead. So I just want to make sure that you guys are aware of that, that that did happen. It's quite the opposite of what Myers said, so, thank you.
Okay, any other, any other public comment on the agenda?
Jeanette Ropetta, Tyrone Township. Greg, when, oh, hang on. This is, this has got to be about the...
Agenda.
Agenda, okay. All right, so I'll leave that for next public comment. I attended the meetings regarding this business, and so I've listened carefully tonight, and I have to say, the level of misinformation being repeated about Bear Naked Wood is deeply concerning, but hey, you know what? Tell me a liberal without telling me you're a liberal. Oh my gosh, the last two comments ago. Seriously, you guys, are we living in China? Everyone read the application, and for example, let's take the photo studio, I'm talking about the previous Planning Commission and Board. It was clearly mentioned in the application, not hidden, not disguised, and at no point did anyone, anyone raise an objection or add a condition against it. So if that studio, for example, was truly a problem, it should have been addressed then, not now, not after the milarcs have invested their time, money, and trust in this township. One Planning Commissioner even said, "Tell us everything you want to do now. Put it in your plan so you don't have to come back later." That was said. So I have to ask, can our township be trusted to stand by its own approvals and to treat every resident fairly? Because when the rules are stra- Because when the rules are stretched and distorted to apply to some people and not to others, that's not law, it's bias. The Millarx have brought something very positive to this community, and why you haven't all taken a field trip there is just beyond me. Instead, you're working off the reports of an angry old township snitch and a few paid employees hanging out on Facebook when they should be doing their township work, and a planning commissioner's attempt to push through his agenda. Due to his hatred for the Millarx, something he continually displays, and his hatred for the Ropettas. The Millarx have been very welcoming to this community. They've demonstrated what good local business looks like. Their presence in this township brings opportunities and further success to other local businesses. To see them treated like this sends a terrible message to every current business owner who should be afraid. For those of you who own businesses or friends and families who own businesses here in Tyrone Township, understand this. If this can happen to the Millarx, it can happen to you next. Anybody up here own a business? Are you in full compliance? So do you support small business owners in this township? And are you willing to stand up for what's right? Make a change tonight. Some of you need to change your mind. Or are you going to tear down this business and destroy it and its owners? Think about it.
Anybody else? Going to close public remarks. And we'll move into unfinished business. Don't believe there is any. So we'll move into new business in item number one. Consideration to revoke Michael and Rebecca Millarx's site plan.
Chuck, I have a question. They supposedly, the township sent them a letter, wanted to work it out, and they sued it. What if you got, what the attorney today, and they dropped the lawsuit, and we let them operate if they were in compliance? Could we do that?
We can settle the lawsuit with, through negotiations, absolutely. We can't do it tonight, unfortunately. We don't have enough time left. And I expect that at some point in time, there is going to be substantive negotiations to resolve it. But we're not at that stage yet.
So do we have to vote tonight to revoke their site plan?
The board's free to take any action it wishes on it. So you can vote. If nobody makes a motion, then you're not going to be voting.
I'd like to see something resolved, because I wouldn't feel good about taking away somebody's business and livelihood. If we could work something out, I would rather do that.
Keep in mind that whatever action you take tonight is not going to result in a change in the activities at the property tomorrow. We're involved in litigation. So if you revoke the site plan, I fully expect that the agribusiness will continue until a judge tells us otherwise or until we reach some sort of agreement.
I have several questions, Chuck. Can you speak to the difference in conditions that were listed in the Planning Commission recommendation letter versus what the board approved? Because the conditions are quite different. And is the township then held to the statements in what the board approved? Because the board has the final say. Is that correct? And that the Planning Commission's conditions are simply a recommendation?
The township board is the body that makes the actual decision on a special land use permit and a site plan. The Planning Commission is only an advisory body to the township board at that point. So the Planning Commission issued its recommendation with several conditions. The township board took action. It probably indicated that it was going to adopt those recommendations of the Planning Commission, as I read. They aren't specifically listed in the letter that was sent from the township to the Millarx.
So are the Millarx still held, then, to the conditions listed in the Planning Commission recommendation?
I think the way the township board acted, the answer is yes. But I will say this, too. In the event that somebody disagrees with that, what the township board approved was an agribusiness. That's defined by our ordinance. The agribusiness has to be something agriculturally based. Activities that are not of an agribusiness were not granted approval. In fact, the township board really didn't have the authority to do so because it isn't a use that's permitted principally or by special land use, except for those listed items, including, for example, a campground, if they made application. But the sale of other products, such as t-shirts, mugs, RV products and things like that, are not specifically authorized by as a principal use or by special land use. There's nothing mentioned about a dog park in the applications. And so even though a condition may not be there, that they have to do something about a dog park, it was never mentioned as part of their agribusiness, and they never got approval for it.
But if at this point in time, they've ceased operation of said dog park, is that still relevant?
If they have ceased and they never resume, then obviously, then that issue is eliminated.
Okay. And the Right to Farm Act. I'm hearing very conflicting information from two attorneys on a number of points tonight. Mr. Meyer stated that a site visit was conducted and that most products, most products, were related to the agribusiness. And that, that implies to me, then, that not everything in that shop has to be related. I need clarification on what the law states regarding the Right to Farm Act.
With respect to the Right to Farm Act, all the state is interested is whether or not the agribusiness follows the GAMS, which are generally accepted agricultural principles. There is nothing in the Right to the Farm Act or the GAMS that says anything about the sale of products that are not agricultural based. The mere fact that they granted them this approval as a protected activity under the Right to Farm Act does not address the other activities or the other items that are being sold.
And in your opinion, does the board have the legal standing and authority to revoke the site plan based on perceived use violations?
Does this board, yes, it does.
Also, how does revocation of the site plan impact current litigation?
At this point, it doesn't affect it one bit. However, if we go down the road and continue with litigation, the court may question whether or not the township has taken the step to revoke the site plan. And if we haven't done so, the court could possibly say, if you haven't revoked the site plan, then I'm not going to enforce your revocation. Because there's nothing there to revoke. Or to enforce, I'm sorry.
So, just to echo what Herman said, I would like to know. You know, we're sitting here at this board table tonight, and a lot of these decisions have already been made with the special land use permit expiring, the conversations back and forth between the Millarx and the township. The trustees weren't part of those conversations, but we're sitting here faced with a decision. So it feels a little bit like a no-win situation for me. And I would just like to know how, from here, from where we are with pending litigation, how Bear Naked Wood and this township can come back to the negotiating table and figure out a way forward? What does that look like?
Well, in most civil litigations, there is a point in time in which those negotiations occur. We will be required by the court to mediate this case. That won't happen until sometime down the line, and several months down the line. But that doesn't prevent either party from reaching out and trying to negotiate. I don't think it's the township's intention to eliminate the Millarx's ability to operate the agribusiness. It is all of the other things that are in violation of the site plan and the special land use permit that the township is interested in. That's why the township invited them in his January 14th, 2025 letter, to come back to the township and go through the process.
Thank you.
I disagree. I think there's a direct evidence that Greg said to cease and desist all your business. I'm in conflict with that statement from our supervisor to the Millarx. And what you're saying is that they were never told to do that. And that's absolutely not true. So I'm wondering how to resolve this conflict of what the supervisor presented to with what you just said, that the township never told them to cease and desist their business.
Well, first of all, I didn't say that. What I did was point to the January 14th, 2025 letter from the township to the Millarx. This is, as far as I know, this is the first documentation of any concern about activities at the property. And it invites the property owners to come back to the township and go through the process. They asked them to stop all of these other activities. It doesn't say to cease all operations on the property. Now, in response, we got a letter from the property owners saying, we're not doing anything wrong, and we're not coming back to the township. Then I sent the letter to them, and that invited and got a letter back from their attorney, denying that they were doing anything wrong.
So you're suggesting the automatic revocation of the special land use permit, which was the driving instrument from the township to allow them to conduct their agricultural business, the ag business, right? That special land use permit was, as you've pointed out a number of times, agricultural related, and when that gets revoked, that in itself is a stopped agricultural business, which is in conflict with what you just read. So I'm not sure exactly how to reconcile that from the township either took the position to revoke the, automatically allow the special land use to be revoked, which Supervisor Carnes did do at a meeting, which he did. And he announced that that was automatically revoked, which would include the agricultural business and all businesses there underneath the special land use permit. So I'm in conflict still with how you can say the township never told them to quit the agricultural business when by revoking the special land use permit, that's exactly what it does, is to say, don't do that.
Again, I never said the township never said that. What I am trying to tell you is that our first reaching out, the first time the township reached out, we invited them back. There was no discussion in this letter or at any time for several weeks about a special land use permit. Nothing. All we did was invite them back to the township to go through the process.
I believe that was around the time that they were scheduled on a planning commission agenda.
Correct.
And then that night declined to come with attorney notice.
So the fact that somebody shows up with an attorney means that, means what? They believe that the township is in error, perhaps, right? But does that mean they're wrong? That's what the courts are here to fight out, right? If we want to reengage, as Herman, you were potentially suggesting, to mitigate this process by getting the teams together again, the legal teams together, to talk about the issues and see if there's any resolution. But I just take issue and I'm conflicted when I hear the township never said that they have to cease and desist their business when there's evidence that the township did that. So I, that can cause many people to want to say, well, then, the township's wrong. My only recourse might be legal action. So I don't quite understand how it can be both of those situations where the township never told them to cease and desist their business, yet by revoking their land use, which is what enables them to do the business, is exactly what the outcome is expected from that. So I, I don't buy this argument. I think there needs to be clarity. Personally, I think that we should table this issue. I don't think we have enough information today to vote on this issue. I think we need more clarification and understanding and maybe give the opportunity for these two legal parties to see if they can come back together and find anything else out. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Supervisor, if I may. In our zoning ordinance, number 36, expiration of special land use permit, the breach of any condition, safeguard, and requirement shall be automatically invalid, the permit granted. The board took no action in denying that permit or taking it back. The ordinance clearly states if they violate it in any condition, way, shape, or form, it's automatically revoked. The board did not do any such thing. I know the planning commission, excuse me. Yes, you did. You did say that, twice. I know the planning commission personnel. I know the planning commission reached out to them several times, asking them to come in and them to look at it. I do know that the meeting was scheduled. I do know that they canceled the meeting the day of. I'm not sure why. I think us as the, not the board, but the employees have tried to work with them. We're not saying if they come in tomorrow and want to work, that we're not willing to work with them. I'm not sure why people are bringing up, it's political and that we're against the Millarx. I have nothing personally, I don't know them. If you own a business, that's great. More power to you. I don't have anything against them or the woodworking. But what I have a problem with is you come before the board and you ask to do a certain kind of business, and you're doing other things, and then you're wondering why we're questioning it. Come back, tell us what you want to do, add it to your site plan, which was asked of you in that letter from Kerry, and go through the process. What is wrong with that? Why is that so hard? Why do you think it's political? Why do you think you're being attacked? I don't understand those points of views. Revis your site plan. Tell the board what you want to do. And I don't think the planning commission or the board would be opposed to working with that. But operating with, under, you know, with certain things, a dog park, an RV, this or that, that isn't on your site plan, I have a problem with. Because that's not what you brought to the planning commission, and that's not what you brought to the board. And that's not what this board approved.
Thank you, Jennifer.
So can we, do we need to motion in some fashion if the board's consensus is to go back to the negotiating table? Or does that just happen naturally if this item is tabled because of pending litigation?
Because we have pending litigation, the court is going to mandate us to mediate this case sometime down the line. Usually, in these types of cases, it takes a while to get to the point where negotiations can be serious. And I don't know if we're at that point right now or not. I kind of doubt it. But again, whatever the township board does tonight, one way or another, is not going to affect the litigation. It's going to live on. And it's either going to be resolved through negotiations, or a judge is going to make a decision.
So you're saying this has to go to court?
It's there. It's already there.
Okay.
And not by our doing.
Well, it just seems like there was a misunderstanding that they were sent a letter and they didn't come. And I would like to hear from them, what happened. I mean, I'm confused. I'm more confused now than when I came here and read through all this. If I was on a jury and I'd been on six... If I was on a jury and I'd been on six, it'd be a hung jury because I can't make a decision right now, one way or another. Yes, Mike, if you could come up?
Sure.
Can you come up, Greg, and talk about it?
Yeah.
I mean, it's their business. I'd like to talk with him.
Absolutely. I've been asking that since January.
Okay.
If nobody bothers to come talk to us, we just get cease and desist letters. Instead of having a conversation, this could have stopped nine months ago, but our life is about a living hell.
Can you tell us, Mike, what happened? Because I don't really know.
We never received any letter. We never received any notification. We would have been here. We got a call from Greg back end of February after our health and wellness event. You guys come on in and talk to us. Did we or did we not, Greg, come in and speak with you?
We did.
Yes, we did. In your words to us, verbatim, "Everything you're doing is fine. Just don't put it on Facebook. Keep doing what you're doing." Did you or did you not sell that to us?
I told you to quit advertising on Facebook.
Everything you said, everything that we are doing is completely fine. Do not put it on Facebook.
Yeah.
Right. So why are we here? This is your show.
Because you gotta cease and desist.
That's where I'm at, Herman.
Mike, just a second. Can I ask you, this has been a question for months. Why did you cancel that meeting for April 16th and go in front of the planning?
We didn't even get any notification.
Oh, we did.
Yeah, yes, you did. And you guys called and canceled.
We did.
Because I was in the office by the girls who got the phone call when you called cancel coming in.
He doesn't know all the emails, but we did get an email from Carrie. I do remember that. But we got advised from our attorney to not do that. So that's why we did that.
So if you would have come to the planning commission and...
Because we were received probably at that point, we think, three or four cease and desist letters from Chuck, the attorney. So we felt very threatened, and why were we going to come to the board to be put on blast again, to go over things that we had already asked you guys to do? So we were advised by our other attorney not to attend that meeting.
So everything that Myers just said a few minutes ago about him trying to work with Chuck was bullshit, right?
No, he's been trying to work with Chuck, but we had a different attorney.
You just, you just said.
Yeah. Can you stop?
You just said...
We had a different attorney that advised us to not come, but we came and met with you. You were in the meeting, don't you recall?
Right, right, right.
And we came to zero conclusions whatsoever. In fact, we were told to turn our video cameras off while you guys all sat there with your cameras still on. And why do I know that? It's because my phones still stayed on, on the table while you guys spoke about it, and we were in the hallway.
We never had our phones on.
Well, that's not what it says.
You guys all said, "Oh, should we turn our phones off too?"
Recording in here.
It was on my phone recording, Jennifer. You were involved in the conversation. If you'd like me to send you a copy of it, I can.
That's fine. I just want to know why you guys couldn't show up to April.
Because you guys have not been playing nice with us. We're, we're receiving cease and desist letters constantly from you guys.
How many letters did you get from Carrie, though, asking you to comply?
One.
You're saying she only sent you one letter?
No, she's sent us multiple emails, but she sent us, she would say, "Refer back to your special land use letter that you wrote." I'd refer back to the special land use letter that said, "This was when we were going to try to open the photo studio." And Greg said, "We know nothing about your photo studio." And I said, "It's on our special land use letter that we wrote." And she goes, "Well, no, now you need to refer back to, to the May meeting minutes for the approval of your business." I'm like, "Well, what are we approved for then?" And nobody could tell us what we were or were not approved for. That's been the problem is, "Refer back to your special land use letter," which in the special land use letter Mike wrote, it said we were going to have a photo studio. We were very clear about that. And then we were told to refer back to the meeting minutes, not the special land use letter. This is all emails back and forth with Carrie. So it's been very confusing to figure out what your board approved us for and what your board is telling us now we cannot do, which is, in this photo studio, is not allowed. But even in the Carlyle and Warman Planning Commission paperwork, it clearly states in the second paragraph of that first page, "Our agricultural business would include a showroom, photo studio, and parking. We would also host monthly classes and seasonal events." That's on paragraph number two of page one. And then if you go, I think, page 12, it literally describes the hours of operation for the photo studio. It's going to be for rent for local photographers. I'm not a photographer, nor is he. We are going to have local photographers come do indoor and outdoor photography, and we listed hours of operation. I don't know how much more clear it could be. I sent that back to Greg, Carrie, Ross, I think was included in all of this, and we were told we're not allowed to open our studio. We're not zoned for it. Well, why wouldn't they have told us when we came to them in '23 and asked to be zoned for all these things we were going to do? What was his name?
Kurt Schultz.
Kurt Schultz said, his words, and he's actually talked to make sense of that. His words even is said, "I was the one that said to you guys, make sure you tell us what you want to do now so you don't have to come back." So if we're hung up on the use of the words building or doing it in the future, our building wasn't built yet. Of course, it was going to be in the future. We were going to open a photo studio tomorrow. We had to finish this expensive barn first. So that's where we're at. It's been nothing but chaos for us. It has not been nice dealing with your board. You guys have not been playing nice with us. So that's why. We don't want to come to a meeting when we're being sent cease and desist letters of something that you told us we were approved to do, which was that photo studio. So why would we come back? And we don't have a campground, guys. We don't have water, power, hookups, sewer, nothing. There is a parking lot over, for RVs that park overnight. Typically, it's one at a time. I sold RVs for a decade. I have a lot of friends in the, that I sold to, a lot of friends in the business still, people in the community that have came and stayed here. You, you heard one spoke about it tonight. I provide nothing. And half of them, sorry, Chuck, but you're wrong, don't even have generators. So there's no noise, and you don't hear my neighbors complaining about this because they can't hear them. We can't, even if they do have a generator, we have tools that are probably even louder than a generator, these generators running on these RVs. Our neighbors can't hear it. We can't hear it at the barn. So if we can't hear it, I know that our neighbors who were here tonight can't hear it either. In fact, we have support letters from our neighbors that touch our property, telling you, asking you to, to stop with our business and worry about something else, something else that's more important. Like, how are we going to get water to our houses that need, that would need it under a, this is real-life stuff. This isn't about us hosting an RV overnight. We don't have a campground. And sorry if I called it a dog park. My God, we put in some fence posts and put up a little fence and called it a dog park. And I did advertise it on Sniff Spot. I did. To fully admit, I made $58 on Sniff Spot. Ooh. I had no idea it was a big to-do. Truthfully, I had no clue. I would have never done that. Mike, we're not rule breakers at all. It's not who we are, but we're entrepreneurs, and we think outside of the box. And we saw a way to possibly produce a cool place for people to come. They come one dog at a time. It's not, you, like, you have 20 there. It's one. We can't even actually meet the people. That's in the rules. You can't go and meet them or meet your, their dogs, nothing. You have to stay away. We put our dog inside the house at that time. That's how it is. We've never even met these people. We've waved at them, but that's it. So if you guys want to pull our site plan, that's fine. But that's what you guys have to sleep with at night.
Well, Becky, what I, and what Greg, you asked Greg, Mike, "You're okay. Just take it off Facebook." To me, as a business owner, that would confuse me a lot. I'm okay.
Tell me about it.
I'm just saying, I'm sitting here listening to this, and he said it's okay.
He did?
Yes.
He admitted it.
Well, I know, I just heard it. But that, see, that's where the problem that I have. It's getting more confusing here.
Sure does.
And I come in to vote on this, and it's like, I'm supposed to know what's going on, and I don't know that. And he said, he told you that it was okay.
It's just like you and I have talked at Home Depot months ago. How many times have we invited people over to our property to inspect what we've done? You commented about it. Why has nobody been there? Why has Greg not been there? Why has anybody from the board or anything come to our property to see what we're doing and how bad of a place we have? We don't have a campground. We shut down a dog park as soon as it was brought up to our attention.
And it wasn't even a dog park.
It was at the fenced area for our customers. We have customers that bring their dogs. We're pet friendly. We don't want their dogs and our dogs to have a possible situation. We put a fenced area so that our customers can enjoy our products, enjoy our property, have a picnic at the picnic table if they want to, leave their dog in the dog park so they're safe. Sorry, we call it a dog park. We don't advertise that thing. It's in our own driveway. And because somebody saw it on a Facebook post that we do our videos because we share our life with the world, heaven forbid we call it a dog park. But does anybody come out and see us? Does anybody make a phone call? Does anybody want to come out and see what in God's name we're doing? Nope. But all you want to do is sit here and do this and do this and shut this down and stop your business.
I need to comment on that point. And first of all, I want to say, I wholeheartedly understand the confusion about the photography studio because when I first read through it, I was confused too. I'm a little puzzled about the extra things that came that weren't even mentioned in the use statement. And I understand that you have a very entrepreneurial spirit. I get that. But on this side of the table, we have to adhere to our ordinances and the guidelines of the special land use permit. So if there's ever a question in the future about an idea that you have, please ask, and let's figure it out, okay?
Yep.
And to the point about not calling and not coming to your property, I can only speak for myself because it crossed my mind several times in the last few weeks. And the reason I did not is because I have had one conversation with you, Becky, through Facebook, that, about the solar overlay. And that was completely manipulated and weaponized against me at this board table. And so from that point forward, I was not willing to take the risk to communicate outside of this board meeting.
That's how you feel about it.
That is how I feel about it.
I feel about it the other way.
And that's fine. I respect that.
And you also, you also messaged me. I never came after you.
I did. I did message you.
And we've already been friends on Facebook, so I think it's quite odd that you find my, all of you have spent stock in my Facebook. Maybe not all of you, but multiple people have. And that's why I have all you blocked. I don't want, I don't want you in my business.
I get it.
It was just like when Scott Dietrich came to our place uninvited last year to take videos to promote you to get elected.
I don't know anything about that.
And I don't, and I don't think that you do.
That's where it was at.
Let's try to stay on topic here.
Hey.
Yep.
Greg, we're trying to share what all this is all about.
A lot of this is stemming from Scott, so why can't we bring him up?
And a lot of our problems are ever since we were putting speakers in our shop back in January. We want to listen to music, and I want to watch the TV in my shop. And, and all of a sudden, since January, everything has gone downhill because of people that we know and decisions, and that's where all this political things come from. We never had one issue. Not one thing up until all of a sudden magically January this year. And all of the neighbors, you can poll every single neighbor we have, and I guarantee they all say the same thing in their letters, there are no complaints because we have improved our property. We bring business to the community. We're respectful of our property, we're respectful of our neighbors' property, and we're not going to do anything to harm that. We want to improve everything and, and everything around our area. That's what we're trying to do. That's what we've been all about. But here we are.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come over, Sarah.
Bye.
So the business on hand is, the permit was, special land use permit was revoked already with our ordinance, according to the ordinance, until we get this settled out. What we have tonight on the board table is if we're going to revoke the site plan.
We don't...
Or do nothing.
We don't have to make a motion. I mean, I can entertain a motion, but if...
Chris, did you already want to make a motion to table it?
Uh, we, I don't believe we need to make a motion to table it.
I don't think you need to table it. I, I just, I can ask for a motion, and you can all remain silent, correct?
Yes.
Yes, that's right.
Or you can make a motion. So I'm asking if anyone would like to make a motion.
I'm torn on what we would like to do and what we have to do. As I've stated many times in my eight years on this board, you can't always make a decision based on what you want to. You have to do it on, you know, your, our ordinances and...
What's best for the township.
What's best for the township. I do wish they would have kept that meeting in April and went to the planning commission and pled their case of what they wanted to change. I'm not sure why an attorney would advise them not to. I think what sits in front of us right now is they're, they are operating or have operated outside of that, what they have on their site plan. I feel we have no other option but to revoke that at this time. Doesn't mean, mean that in the future, this doesn't all get ironed out. I don't like that decision, but I think that's what our ordinances and site plans define us to do. It says, states in there that if they're doing things other than what's on their site plan, then it's revoked.
But they have since stopped when they were notified, is the claim.
And I also think there has to be room in everything that we do as a board to consider whether just because it's the ordinance, is it the right ordinance? Or do we need to put on hold and go revisit the ordinance? I mean, it's, this isn't a, oh, just because it says that, that's the right thing. Sometimes we give an application and we have to approve it because it's the ordinance of the day. But then we never, very rarely do we go back and, and make the changes so that it can accommodate growth, accommodate businesses, accommodate these things that we're discussing here. These are important things on how we move forward as a changing culture and a changing community. And I can tell you, this is not the kind of thing that invites people to want to open up businesses in this township. Because if we're confused, then there's no way we can get people. I mean, it's the black and whiteness obviously isn't helping us from this perspective. And so it's okay to say, "We don't have to vote on it. Let's potentially, you know, see if the, the court or mediation can take place and see what happens." We, we don't always have to just act on it if we don't have the right place to do it or the right amount of information. And I, I agree with Herman. I don't feel like I have the right amount of information today to make this determination.
Is there anything else, Chuck, that you could add or should add?
I just wanted to say that a lot of the things that we've heard from the Malarks about the noise and things like that are all the reasons that we have an ordinance that requires the planning commission to review. There may be no noise there by generators. The generators may be very quiet. Maybe only some of the RVs have generators there. But the point of the ordinance is to bring this to the township's attention so that the planning commission can evaluate it, and then the township board can evaluate it. It may be true that Harvest Host is a great organization. It may be true that the Malarks have some of the finest woodworking products that there are. Nobody's disputing that. The only question before the township board is whether or not a site plan established what they can do and whether they have followed that site plan. That's the only thing before us.
But we're responsive to the letters from the township to discontinue things like a dog park, then what grounds do we have at this moment in time to revoke the site plan?
If all of the other activities have been, have ceased, and I haven't heard that all of those activities are, such as the Harvest Host guests, if all of those activities have ceased and all we have left is the agribusiness of selling woodworking products, then the township board doesn't have to take action.
Just, I'm struggling with the real-world application, Chuck, that you can only, you know, have the agric, I mean, a business today, if you look at today's business climate, I don't know a single business that doesn't produce merchandise to sell to their customers. Psychologists do it, for Pete's sake. You could get any kind of business. Psychologists do it, for Pete's sake. You could get any kind of business. I, I don't, I don't understand this, well, there's merchandise. Oh, they're, because they have bare naked wood t-shirts, then that's not allowed because it's not made of wood. I, this is, this is, this is part of the ridiculousness of the merchandising thing. Now, I understand, you know, let's say Woody's convenience store or the, up on the center, they, they have everything planned out. They can do food stuff. They can do anything else like that. They, they have to comply with what they, what they've done. But if they bring another product in, are we watching those products? And I'm, I'm not saying anything about that facility. I've shopped there and got gas there many times. But my point is, is that, are we going to police to that level where innovation and things like that come into play? I mean, because that's the nitpicking, which I think the community sees, the nitpicking that says every little thing, oh, oh, wait, you had two dogs and not one. I mean, how, how, okay, how many roosters can we have, right? On, in a, in a property? Oh, you can only have one rooster and 10 chickens. Okay, well, I have two. Which one should I shoot? I mean, which, which one should I bump off? Or is there a rooster adoption center around that we can adopt one of those roosters?
We do have an ordinance that tells us how many animals we have. You do know that, right?
Of course I do.
You know how many chickens you can have, right?
The only, only response I have to that is, is the township invited them back. If you want two dogs, come back and ask us.
Well, and it's not nitpicking to expect a special land use permit holder to adhere to the guidelines of their special land use permit. We, we have to have some boundary where we don't just hand out special land use permits in residential areas and say, you can do whatever you please. There has to be a boundary. But it also has to be made clear, right? And it's not fair if it's not clear to the business owner what those boundaries are. Do I think in this case they were tested? Yes, I do. Do I think it should be and could be resolved somewhat amicably? I hope so. I do. And Woody is just an example. It's not even a fair comparison because it's a commercial business and a commercially zoned property. This, this is a special land use permit in a residential area, and those rules exist for a reason. That's all I want to say about that.
So I listened to Chris and I listened to you, Sarah. And it comes down to one thing. If a supervisor comes to me and said, I'm doing everything right, what she did, then why would I have to do anything else? I'm complying with everything. You confused them, Greg, by telling them that you are doing everything right. Am I right, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I'm saying. Whether it's commercial or not, he said you're doing everything right. That's where I'm confused. Here's, here's your confusion. Okay. I didn't know that it was a wedding ceremony venue. I didn't know it was a commercial photography studio. But Greg, there's no... I didn't know, let me finish. I didn't know it was seminars and sale events in a pole barn. I, I mean, there were some things that I wasn't aware of when I said... All right, so there was no evidence of a wedding, no evidence of a wedding? No. None? Yes, sir. Okay, so I'm on a jury. I'm listening to this. No evidence of a wedding. Okay? Then why are you advertising for a wedding? Well, the, the attorney said, I can advertise. I advertised. I had a DJ service. I wanted to see if I could get business. Okay? But the thing of it is, it's like you told him, Greg, and there was no evidence of no wedding at all there. That's why I asked. There was no evidence. So there wasn't a wedding venue. That, that wasn't there because there was never any weddings that we know of. So you said that you didn't know about that. I didn't know. What else didn't you know? When I told him, I didn't know he was advertising for wedding ceremonies. Okay, what else? Commercial photography. All right, seen it, the thing, okay. And I didn't know he was advertising seminars, sales events in a pole barn for health products. I mean, there was some... See, hold on. With that there, I'll bet there's probably in this township with, whether Shackley or Amway or that, all of that stuff happens all the time. And I, I did say, I forget my exact word, it was like a Tupperware party. It was a Tupperware party. He said, they're just hosting Tupperware parties.
You laughed about it.
I know, because that's how I took it. What's wrong with a Tupperware party? Yeah.
You want to know my view on that?
And you had all the paperwork written on your desk in front of you. It was all spelled out because you couldn't find it on your own website. You had to print it out and bring it to you with our photography studio, the events and the classes.
So what are we going to do? It's 10:30.
No kidding.
We give you here till 2 o'clock talking about this. Are we going to table it? Are we going to vote on it? Nobody has to make a motion. Okay. I can close new business and move into public remarks.
You're awful quiet, Pam. Do you have any words to say?
Pam is quiet.
I know.
All right, well, I'm going to close new business and move into the last segment of public remarks.
What did you decide?
Nobody made a motion.
No motion.
Okay, why are we just going back and forth with them?
Yes.
Stop, Greg.
Okay.
What is she doing?
Public remarks.
Sheree Taylor, Ms. Ali. So let me just say this. Not long ago, 877,000 small businesses were closed because of our governor. 60% of those small businesses stayed permanently closed. That's 526,000 small businesses that did not come back by being closed for various reasons, according to the pandemic. It seems to me that you're trying to destroy this couple's well-deserved, hard-working business over political bias and 30 some complaints from somebody that doesn't even live next door. That seems kind of shitty, actually, that somebody that lives miles away, and you don't have any evidence of any neighbors complaining, you've never been there, you've never talked to the neighbors, but you're going to sit and make a decision on a business that is busting their ass trying to do something good for this community. And from what I've heard, they, they, they stopped whatever they, you thought they were not doing correctly. So this is kind of just like a waste of time. And they had to file a lawsuit and talk to a lawyer because they feel like they're being targeted, which they are. And I think you all need to just start thinking about things a little bit more deeper. Just because you might be liberal or conservative, you might not have the same views, is still a business that a couple has brought into your community to try and share the joy of their craftsmanship. And bring people in from all over. I mean, I, I can tell you, I went to one of their classes. I loved it. People, people, they are the great, great people. I saw it on Facebook. And it was a nice little get together. No big deal. But you all are making a big deal over something that it's their products that they're selling that to, to bring out into the world. I bought candles from their birch trees that they harvested. I thought that was pretty dang cool to put in my living room. So did my, my granddaughter when she saw it. She wants one, but I don't know if I can go back there because I don't know if they actually have a business that they can sell products, which is pretty scary, in my opinion, that you all are going to sit in judgment of them when I think some of you are compromised and listening to conflicting things that are being said. And I'm not saying you're all right and you're not wrong. But to me, I think more thoughtfulness of a couple that they're not selling weed, they're not a drug house, they're not, you know, racing cars up and down the roads, committing crimes, they're trying to build a business in your community. What is wrong with that? I mean, really. I mean, it's pretty shitty, in my opinion.
Hi, Mike Hamburg from 1140 Foley Road. Promise I'll make it short. It was a good football night last night, but we're in way too late for this meeting. Just quickly, and this is something unrelated to the current topic, but I just wanted to follow up because a couple of weeks ago, I was here and asked some questions. And I found out it wasn't the format for that. But I did get a response back from the township regarding the costs, the estimated costs for the potential recall election. And that came in at about an average of $24,000, based on two elections we had previously for the primary, the presidential election, excluding the cost for the early ballots. However, I did ask about the wide range because of the potential of it going up to at least $70,000 or more. That was a comment that was made by Mr. Ropetta in one of his videos on YouTube. That was posted a couple of weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago. And because of this, the disparity in the costs, I understand where the $24,000 came from. But if Mr. Ropetta, if you could follow up with some information on where that cost came from, it would be helpful for those of us that want to make a decision when it comes time for a petition or voting, as well as the fact that, you know, if there was a change to that number, if you could do a follow-up as well, just so that we're working with informed information. That's all I've got.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Dan Johnson, Rose Township. I'd just like to make two points. Ms. Eden, you had made a comment that this wasn't political. But I've watched the board meetings, and I strictly watched just the board meetings to get an impartial view for the past four, five, six months. You polled the public, and I guarantee you, 95% of them are going to say that this is political. The other point, your attorney has referenced several times of ample evidence, yet nothing has been shown. You haven't shown a single complaint by a neighbor against the Malarks. You haven't shown that they're doing anything dangerously. If I have friends over and they bring their RV and they stay in my, in my driveway, and they put their dogs in my dog pen, am I now hosting a dog park or an RV campground? No. They said they had one group of, or two people that came out and used the campground. One person that used the dog, or that used the dog park. That's not a pattern. That's not even consistent with your ordinance. Otherwise, half these people here would have to be arrested or written tickets and citations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenette Ropetta. So we've spent all these months, and even tonight, all these hours. And Jennifer is so sure that you've got to go down this path, but yet she doesn't make a motion for it. What a waste of time. What a waste of all of our time, your time, our money, the Malarks' money. And so now you're going to go around and patrol and see who's got RVs in their, in their driveways? Are they running a generator? Are they family? How do you determine now who gets to come stay at someone's house with an RV? This is so ridiculous. And I can't believe that you're still missing the Right to Farm Act. What part of the Right to Farm Act do you not understand? That's going to, look at what you guys are doing, and it's going to preempt what you're doing. It is absolutely political. You've got a guy sitting back there on the planning commission who has done nothing but attack people like myself and the Malarks for months, calling names, calling us Ropetaphiles. You okay with that? Calling for me to be deported? Are you all right with that? There's a word for that. He's calling me out for my country of origin. And you guys are okay with it? You're on that website, Herman, on that Facebook page. You see what's being said. Why aren't you standing up? Why aren't you standing up, any of you, standing up for what's going on? And Greg Carne, the minute that you emailed me back and told me it was my fault that Kevin Ross lunged at me, and then you copied Kevin on the email? How dangerous and reckless and unprofessional was that? And I'm glad that you admitted tonight to what you told the Malarks about them having that health and wellness seminar. And he laughs about it tonight. He thinks it's funny. Yeah, see, he's smiling now, too. And what he said to them was, yeah, I used to do Amway. Go for it. It's no, it's no more than a Tupperware party. Go for it. It's okay. Yeah, it's okay. That's what our supervisor did. And then you wonder why they're confused? You are so incompetent, Greg. I can't believe that you're sitting up there and pretending that you're doing everything okay and you're sitting there laughing about it. Yeah, it's ridiculous.
Ruby Kelly. Since recall was brought up, I guess I can make comments about that. And I just want to ask Chris if we can just kind of summarize the legal bills because it's been in the news, it's been provided all over the place by the board, I assume, on what the total legal bills are that you're responsible for costing the taxpayers. But if I remember correctly, early on, at one board meeting, you pointed out, and Dean pointed out, that these aren't correct. All legal fees are being put under my name. And they all agreed that it was happening and it was going to be fixed. I never heard another word about it, whether it was fixed. It wasn't on the agenda the next week or whatever. And then, if you look at the total amount that they're saying, all for your case doesn't even make sense if you know anything about legal fees. So my question, you're actually saying, I think you maybe thought it's less, or you've calculated it. Can you provide copies of invoices? Or do you have information that you can provide of the true number of what your case cost? You know, I don't know if you can talk to me, or if it's something that...
I'm working on it.
You could send me an email or...
I've already told the board I'm working on that.
You're working on that to correct that number? Because it seems really high. And I just don't ever remember it being fixed the first time. So...
Warden Tomaszewski. I'm actually glad you tabled the issue because to me, looking at the paperwork, I went through all the packet. I read the lawsuit information and everything. And the only thing that I really see that's a question are two things. The so-called camping and the dog park. Well, the dog park, they said they're done, discontinued. Camping and the issue, and I'm surprised our township Karen hasn't been on it, but I've seen, actually, in my daily travels here the last two days, I've seen three people that are camping at somebody's home. I know that there's an elderly couple. They're staying at their son's home. They've been there for quite a while. I'm not going to report somebody for something that is so frivolous. And they, and they, I've seen people that have been there for a couple of days, and I've seen people that have been there for a month. But it's their family. And they're, and they haven't been a burden on anybody within the neighborhoods. And they're in a residential neighborhood, which is completely different than, you know, the, the property that the Malarks have. the property that the Malarks have. So to me, it's a non-issue. I mean, it strictly becomes a petty issue. And people wonder why we say it's political. Same guy, Karen D., gets up here, every meeting, looks directly over at Chris, has made the comment about Bear Naked Woods hooking up illegally, hooking up wires, hooking up speakers, doing all these activities. Well, I'm going to make a comment. Karen D. needs to get some friends. Because I know myself, I have friends of mine, they have big screen TVs. They go around, they help their other friends that are technologically disadvantaged, like myself. So how this becomes a big issue over something like that is just ridiculous. And as I mentioned before, doing my homework and looking, it's the same person that has made repetitive complaints about the business. And I can guarantee you, I could go through right now, in this township, there are people that are on our boards that run businesses that are not compliant with their businesses and their zoning. But I don't have to be so petty if their neighbors aren't complaining about those businesses and nobody's had an issue. Do we have to be so petty to really start particularly picking on somebody because maybe I don't like that you have a different opinion than I do? I think that most of us, or a majority of us, I like to have civil conversations. And where we've ended up is there's nothing civil anymore. There's too much Facebook, and you have people, and we keep talking about there needs to be more civility. Your own attorney, the high-priced attorney, said that there's people shouldn't be on Facebook that are in the public. And yet there's people that have multiple pages and get on there, and they're on there spreading it, you know, we'll call it information. So in order to make a good step forward, I think we just need to turn around, take a step back, and quit with it.
Casey Gilbert. I do not live on White Lake Road. I'd just like to take a moment to thank our township's self-appointed vigilantes, Chris and Jeanette Ropetta, Mike and Bucky Malark, and Tim Brode for their tireless efforts to keep us all safe from gun violence threats that in reality the township never received nor were ever written. Your brave work in spreading fear, misinformation, and false accusations has certainly kept the rumor mill alive and well. It's comforting to know that while the rest of us were focused on facts and community progress, you were busy manufacturing emergencies that never existed. So truly, thank you for your service and reminding us exactly why level-headed leadership, truth, and accountability are so important for this township. Sincerely, Casey Gilbert, the one you drug through the mud to further delay the progress of the township.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you, Casey.
Hey, 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 hey.
I think Gordon referred to the two of the multiple pages. Must have been Jeanette, because she's the only one I know. It's on every social media out there. It's a shame. We just took the residential area, just turned it upside down again, again, because of misinformation. Because, and I saw two threats to you tonight, so I figured that's probably why you folded. So I'm sorry, I felt like you folded. Our lawyer sat up there and told you, gave you direction, and you guys didn't vote. And I'm not saying they shouldn't have their business. They violated. And they sat up here and lied right to the end. They sat right here and lied to you, right down to, we only had one dog, we only had one camper there, and you showed all the evidence up there. Like I said, in the beginning, we asked them to come in. That's all we said was, are these supposed to be allowed? Is this, that's all the questions. It's a resident, any resident, and we've done this with everybody else. Meetings with Chris and Jeanette and everybody. We did this with everybody. They were picked out. And let's put this way, the liberal stuff, I'm so tired of hearing about it. Chris, let me ask you something. What's more liberal about blowing our money on a lawsuit that was so stupid? Okay? You throw our money around like it was nothing. You sued us. That's, I mean, that's not conservatism, it's conservatism? I'm sorry. All right? It's not conservatism at all. I'm sorry, I can't get that word out. But let's talk about all the other issues. Let's talk about you want to pay for the fire runs. That's not conservatism. That's liberalism. So why isn't Gordon throwing the liberal name at you? He called every one of these up here people liberals. Because they have an opinion. But you sound like you're the most liberal person up here because, boy, you sure are blowing our money. But I'm kind of mad, you know, because I think you had an ordinance, and I think we had to put our feet to the fire because they lied right up to the end. And they're going to continue. And I'm sorry, but you wasted Chuck's time. I think he made it very clear, if we don't do this, the judge is going to, and I want them to conform. I mean, I think anybody, any business, it should conform. And I don't know if anybody wants weddings over there because we just already turned down the neighbor on the corner a couple of years ago, if you remember right. There's a, the people on Linden Road in Center was turned down. So the park, this gentleman says, two campers. We got, then she said she was going to expand, and she said she set up to 10 there. I mean, they just continuously lied, and we, but you don't hold your feet to the fire. So I really feel sorry for our residential areas. And I don't feel that in the future we're ever going to protect our residential areas. And I'm disappointed. But Greg, I got to really put it on you because I think you go in there and run your mouth really screwed things up. And I don't blame that dumb for that.
We all should.
That's a long ways down, like one of your siblings.
Sir, anybody else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
No.
Support.
No.
Support.
No, I have miscellaneous business.
No.
Oh, God. Quick.
No.
The burning ordinance.
Hey, no, no, she made a motion and I second. All in favor?
No.
All right, go ahead.
I have some final notes that I'm putting on the burning ordinance, the open burning ordinance, and I'm wondering if I can send it, if I can email it to all the board members prior to the November meeting, have a look at it and respond with comments, and then make those revisions to it before I supply it, or is that OMA or whatever?
No, you don't want to do that.
That's deliberation toward.
Okay, so I guess you're going to get what I got. You don't have to vote it in if you don't want.
We can make changes at the table.
So, yeah, you can make changes at the table.
Oh, definitely, though we'd like to see whatever you have for informational purposes to come prepared to the meeting, then to discuss it.
It'll be the board package. What's it? Nope, one more thing. Phil, I was talking with Phil Westmoreland, and we cannot seem to find a Consumers Power contact to get a budget price for the electrical drop. So I was hoping Dean would be here, Mr. Consumers, but he's not. I also heard from Phil that Herman has a contact.
I have a contact from the townhouse, the Consumers folks that dropped that money.
That electrical?
Yeah.
Oh, well, I'm all ears.
We need it.
I'll get it to you.
I'm all ears, thank you. Phil and I are having difficulty finding the right person and getting a budget number on that so that we can have the rest of the info you need at the November meeting. Okay, now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Karen, you got the time?
Yeah, I was way off.
Good, because mine's folded up.
I was way off.
I said that a lot before. The prices that you guys were giving me for... Wait, should be around $3,000.
You know what? Karen, don't. You've got me, folks, from all the wells that are being put in Springfield Township. And they're really not on the line of what's being done over there. We know...
Okay, work on it. It's kind of big.